Welcome, everybody, to the February 21st, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. And agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers and can be turned into Holly Hennies. The Commissioners now utilize the speaker request forms. If you'd like to speak on an item, please complete Speaker's Request Form and locate at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to Commission Manager Holly Hennies located at the lower right side of the dais. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll do a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ron Roskine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Roskine. Next on our agenda is a review and approval of the agenda.
Is there a move, approval?
It's been moved and seconded for approval. Is there any comments from the public? Any from the Commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, and I'll recognize our Commission Manager, Ms. Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board Member or citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February 3rd, 2023. Number six is to acknowledge the Auditor's Office will conduct a joint city-school election for the City of Rapid City, City of Hill City, Rapid City School District, Hill City School District, and the Town of Quinn, all to be held on June 6th, 2023. Number seven is approval of the resolution to discharge county aid lanes with no activity for 30 years. Number eight is approval of the resolution to discharge county lanes of deceased persons. Number nine is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Tin City Lodge, number 112. Number 10, to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Quinn Volunteer Fire Department. Number 11 is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of January 2023. Number 12, to declare asset number 46565, which is a 2018 Ford Explorer, as surplus property we turned over to the insurance company for salvage sale. Number 13 is to declare the following three vehicles as surplus property for the purpose of trade towards the vehicle replacement purchase. Asset number 820 through 7, which is a 2017 Dodge Charger. Asset number 08623, which is a 2007 Chevy Malibu. And asset number 01062, which is a 2018 Dodge Charger submitted by the Sheriff's Office. Number 14 is to declare one Glock 19, serial number BCHV817, as surplus for the purpose of commendation, as submitted by the Sheriff. And finally, number 15 is to declare one Glock 17, serial number BCHF962, and one Survival Armor Vest, serial number 2104067923, as surplus for the purpose of sale.
Thank you, Holly. Is there any member of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, any on the board?
Mr. Chair, would you please pull number nine?
Okay, we have number nine that we want to pull. Any others?
Number 13.
Number 13 from Deb. Any others from the Commission? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion for approval of the consent agenda, all except for items nine and 13.
So move.
Seconded. Moved by Drews, seconded by Lester to approval. Consent agendas, all except nine and 13. Any conversation? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine, Mr. Roskine.
Mr. Chair, Tin City Lodge 112 is located in Hill City, and it's probably one of the more active Masonic Lodges, and I see Brother Knapp is here today. I'd like, John, just to kind of go over some of the things that the Lodge does and what the, this raffle will do for the Lodge and the community of Hill City. Yep.
And just, just a reminder to the public, this is to acknowledge notice of intent to conduct a raffle, so, go ahead.
Good morning. Tin City Lodge, like Ron says, we're very, very active in our community, and the reason for this raffle, we're going to sell two $500 gift cards, 250 tickets, each one for $10. We do four scholarships for our graduating seniors, and $1,000 doesn't go very far anymore, so we're looking at raising those to $2,000, so it'll take some money to do that. We just got done with the Delta-Del bus that we have sponsored, nine years now, I think, and we did 41 kids for a total of $30,462 worth of dental work, so. And we also run the barbecue in Hill City in August, if you've heard of that before. We had bring in 31 national teams to the City of Hill City and the Pennington County, and obviously costs are going up for those guys to travel and for us to be able to put that on, so another reason for the raffle. Through that barbecue, we support nine nonprofits in Hill City that we donate money to for them helping us run the barbecue. We also do books for bikes. We give one bike to a girl and one bike to a boy for reading the most books during the summer months. That was a $100 donation to those kids that doesn't buy a bike anymore, so we're looking at raising some more money for that. Geez, what else? But anyway, that's why we're here, that's why we're trying to raise some money. Tin City's got 37 members and, which I'm very gracious to call Brother Ron one of my brothers, and he's very active, and I'm very active, and we're here to hopefully raise more money for our kids, because everything we do is for the kids of Hill City. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, and we appreciate what the Tin City Lodge 112 does. Ron, did you have a follow-up?
No, I just wanted to say, you know, these small towns, these lodges are drying up, and, you know, Keystone, and I could, I could go on and on and on, but I'm pretty darned proud of Tin City Lodge 112, because they're a small little town like Hill City, and it's just one of the more active lodges in the state of South Dakota, and that's because of the strong membership. Thanks again, John, for explaining what we do.
Thanks, John. Any further comments from the Commission? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion for approval.
Move to approve, number nine.
Moved by Mr. Roskine.
Sir.
Seconded by Mr. Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 13, Mrs. Hancock.
Just a question for the Sheriff. Brian, vehicles are pretty high right now, and does the state bid, are they the same as trying to buy a vehicle? If I went and bought one, meaning the price right now is not the time to buy vehicles? So I was wondering if they give you a pretty good deal on these trade-ins and buying vehicles, and is it a have-to right now to trade vehicles? And for the future, maybe the other issue is, maybe it's not going to get any better, and we better do it now.
Right. Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And this is just part of our routine vehicle replacement process. During COVID, we did, we did have a couple of years there where we really struggled to get vehicles, both off the state bid, the right type of vehicles, and we really struggled to get unmarked vehicles. The cost went through the roof and the availability went way down, so we did hold back some vehicles for the, for a couple of years to make sure we had enough vehicles in case we wrecked one, like we had one on the consent agenda there on a crash. But some of those vehicles that we held back, as you can see, are getting pretty high mileage on them. One of the, one of them that we're trading out here has got 134,000 miles. We tried to get rid of our trade vehicles at about 125,000 miles, otherwise they start to really nickel and dime us to death. But the state, the, the cost of the vehicles on the state bid has stayed pretty consistent, so I feel like we're getting really good value. And if, if we get rid of those vehicles with reasonable mileage on it, we get a good value trade-in back on them. And one thing that we have seen with the, with the market in vehicles, our trade values have gone up with that, and, and frankly, if, if a business isn't willing to give us a good trade value, we do have a backup plan to sell those at, at auction ourselves, because I think the value, we can still get really good value at an auction, too, so.
And I apologize.
We're monitoring all of those.
I talked to you yesterday and then, the day before, I can't remember, Brian, and I should have asked you that, and I didn't remember until I saw this again, so thank you for answering that, because then somebody had said something about a vehicle and how much they bought a truck for, and I was like, looking at this going, I forgot to ask Brian. So usually I call you ahead of time with a question, so thank you very much, but it's good, too, so people know about our vehicles, because people, that isn't very many miles, but if you see what our deputies and our first responders do to our vehicles, they, they work very hard, and they make a difference on those vehicles, so. The trade-ins and everything else do make the difference, and you can't buy even a used vehicle anymore, you're right, for, you get, you get a good price on trade-ins, is a good way to put it, so thank you for that information today, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thanks, Deb. Is there any further questions for Mr. Mueller? If not, I'd look.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskine.
Move to approve item 13.
Second.
It's been moved by Roskine, seconded by Ms. Hancock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next on our agenda, item number 16 is Elevate Rapid City, five-year funding request, and I'll introduce Mr. Tom Johnson, CEO of Elevate. Please introduce yourself, Tom.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Tom Johnson, CEO and President of Elevate Rapid City. I'll try to be quick with this. I, I think Elevate is about five years old officially as of January 1st this year. Seems like a long, long time for me, too. I've been here about three and a half years officially. They got me in as CEO about August, September of 2019. Many of you were here during the time before I was, and you remember that Elevate raises money in five-year campaign cycles. And so their first campaign was 2018, January through the end of 2022, December of '22, and they had raised $7.5 million. So for the last six months, we've been going around and raising money for the next campaign, which is '23 through '27, and I've was meeting with the campaign committee, and they said, hey, have you asked the county? And I said, no, I never thought about that. We gave them two seats on our Board as ex officios. It never occurred to me to ask them to, to support the campaign, and they'd indicated that before I got here, that the County Commission had indeed supported community economic development. I'm not even sure what the numbers were, but they said, yeah, go back out and ask this county. So on behalf of the Board, I'm here officially with this request. I know many of you have seen this document, I don't spend too much time on it. There's some ugly, ugly pictures of some snapshots of our staff right there on the bottom left. Right here, though, is what I'd probably point out to you. So our first campaign, we plugged the numbers in of the jobs that we directly worked on, and those are the numbers we got back in terms of the economic impact of, of five years of Elevate. Our second campaign, that's what we think we're going to try to do in the next five years, there's a history. We really wanted to increase the goals for the next campaign, so everything you see up there in the five-year goals, the $250 million in gross sales, the increase in wages, the 5,000 jobs, those are all increases over the last five years. So we really wanted to come out and set higher goals, the Board did. The one that's new, however, is the labor force participation rate. We know that our unemployment rate right now is, are at historic lows. It's actually dipped into the 1.9, 1.8 range in the last few months, from what we can tell. So historic lows in unemployment, however, we're still seeing challenges in the labor force participation rate. Unemployment is, if you're looking for a job, can you find it? So anybody that can breathe right now or has a pulse, if they want a job, they can find one in Rapid City. But what we're not seeing is post-pandemic folks coming back into the labor force, so women with children who can't afford childcare, seniors who left the labor force not coming back in, a lot of our non-traditional labor, like our Native American brothers and sisters, are not coming back to the labor force as fast as possible. So we're putting a lot of our dollars in the next five years, mostly into workforce, and so you see at the top right, our five-year commitment. I won't spend a lot of time on those numbers, but you'll notice the one that has the biggest pool would be the $500,000 in the workforce development. That's because we know we've got to make the biggest difference right now. I could recruit five companies tomorrow to Rapid City, but if they can't find labor, it's not going to do us a darn bit of good. So we're putting a significant, almost tripling our workforce development budget, Mr. Chairman, for the next five years, and so that's where most of the money's going, and that's why we put that goal in there. We've been raising money for about six months. Our goal this campaign, again, last campaign, they were seven and a half. This campaign, they wanted to get to nine. I thought that was going to be pretty hard to do. As of today, this morning, I talked to somebody who was going to come in, I think we're at $10.3 million, so we smashed through our goals in our next campaign. So Elevate's raised 10 and a half, almost $10.5 million for the next five years. That includes about $600,000 a year of vision funds and another $250,000 from the, from the city. So the city puts about $800,000 of that budget in right now. The rest of this pamphlet are our goals with economic development. When I got here, and the other pillars, when I got here, one of the things they said is make this a performance-based organization, so you're going to have goals, we have five-year goals, we're also going to have one-year work plan goals, and so we have goals and outputs and outcomes for every division that we have. You can see those for yourself on the accompanying PDF that you've got. We expect two pages on workforce development, as I said, because it's one of our big focuses. And then I'd point out that on the business advocacy, housing and quality growth pillar, that's where you see a lot of our work as a region. Since you guys work in the county, we also understand the value of being regional, and so as Elevate has grown, when I got here, it was called Elevate Rapid City, I believe that at some point, you'll probably see the Rapid City fall off, and it must be called Elevate. That's because we do so much work regionally. Right now, we're helping with the Governor's Office of Economic Development establish a trade office in West River. That'll be housed in our office. That'll be heavily focused on agriculture, that'll be heavily focused on the hills and all the communities, and not just Rapid City. So we're putting a regional trade office inside Rapid City. We've also contributed $25,000 to, I know you guys are working with Cheryl Chapman in the water issues that she's facing, regional water systems. We put $25,000 into that. We've also housed Cheryl rent-free for two years in our incubator as well. Garth Wadsworth, who's here with me today, he's my colleague, he's our Director of Public Policy. He spends a lot of time on regional planning, a lot of time working with our local partners, a lot of time talking about infrastructure. I have him here today, if anybody has any questions about what we're doing in terms of regional infrastructure and planning, and some of the stuff we're doing with the communities in the hills. We do a lot of data pools, and we're excited to become more regional. We think that's going to be the future of Elevate. With that, Mr. Chairman, I won't say too much more. I wanted to make sure that we're also here to update you. We, we told you we'd come, whether you give us the money or not, we're going to be here on a regular basis updating the Commissioners on what we're doing, where we're going, and I want to also say that regardless of what you do with the money, you still have those two ex officio seats on our Board. We value our relationship with the county. That's not going to change regardless of the number or what you decide here today or down the road. I've worked with every one of you on important issues. I, I find you all to be of utmost character in, in thinking about the future of Rapid City and knowing, and in the county, and knowing that the future of the Black Hills, our, our, our days ahead of us are the best and brightest. So for that, for that, Mr. Chairman, I'd have, be happy to answer any questions. Garth's here as well, and I'd stop there.
Thank you, Tom.
Chair.
I'll, I'll recognize Ms. Hancock.
So when we first started this, I didn't really support economic development. In the county, we didn't see a lot of help through economic development. Tom's been here for about five years. He's moved economic development into a new, whole new area for not only Rapid City, but South Dakota and our county, through the water systems, through employment. What I really like is the diversity. He's reached out to reservations, he's reached out to different areas all over, not only the county, but the city and the state. So for me, $50,000 for this group and what they've been doing all over our state, let alone our county and our city, I don't think that's a lot for this county to invest for economic development. So for me, we can't take it out of our contingency. Like I said before, I didn't see a lot from what was happening for economic development, but if you see or you watch, they're all over everywhere you go, in the state, in the city, in the county. So I've appreciated how much they diversified in everything they've done, and they have some really good people there, that have really good hearts that are reaching out to a lot of people in a lot of different areas. So for me, I wouldn't be opposed to giving them $50,000 out of contingency.
Thank you, Deb. Any other further comments from the Commission?
Sure.
Mr. Drews.
My suggestion would be that we defer discussion on this until we have our 2024 budget discussion, which is coming up soon.
Okay, any further comments?
Mr. Chair, I think I would agree with that one as well. I'd probably like to ask some more questions offline with you, too, you know, from, you know, I, I represent District Four, which is, you know, primarily ag as well, and some of the concerns I have from the citizens, and what I've seen, I don't know if you know, but I'm in the market for a new place, and we do see a lot of economic development. We've helped well with economic, economic development and not against it, but what we are seeing is we're seeing a lot of increase in property values, which is, it's a good thing for the county, but it's not a good thing for some of the individuals that have to, to pay taxes on that, and maybe not so much on the county side of it, but from the other entities that have the capability to tax someone higher property value. So I'd like to talk about it more, because I want to know, I want to understand how it's going to impact those that are low income when we bring all these businesses in, which I do believe you're doing a good job in that, but it also inadvertently raises the property values, which does impact a lot of our citizens that have a very low median income, or that are no longer participating in the workforce, which I understand you're trying to fix the workforce payout, but that also still negatively impacts a lot of our citizens. So I'd like to talk with you about that more before I'm willing to do that, but I think it's, it's possible it could be a good thing, and, and Commissioner Drews has a great point. We should probably take it out of our regular budget rather than out of a contingency, because the purpose of a contingency is just in case we need it.
Ron, do you have a comment before I speak?
Mr. Chair, I guess what I'd like to do is see where Senate Bill 21 goes, because we have, we're vested $50,000 in that. If that doesn't pass, we're gonna, right now, if it does pass, that $50,000 would be a cost share with the state, and if it doesn't, you know, I think we agree with Mr. Drews that we should probably wait until we get through the budget.
What bill is that? I don't even know what bill.
That's the $950,000 that the state, for the forest revision plan.
We've all voted to give you $50,000?
Yeah, we do.
It went to Black Hills Council, local governments. It isn't spent yet, isn't allocated, it's just out there.
Okay. First of all, Tom, thank you for coming here and giving the presentation, keeping us updated. I think you have support, but from, and I'm kind of on the board with that, too. I think this is more a budget time that we should go through, it's not an emergency or anything like, along those lines. I think we greatly support what Elevate's done for our community and has done for the county. I mean, you've come in and helped us out with, with some of the labor costs that we were looking at, and I think that's very important for us. And, and I, just from my docs with this Commission, they support Elevate, and I think it's just more appropriate at the budget time, so we, we're all on the same page, and I think, you know, from the conversations, I, you know, that's what you're kind of looking for, and I think if that's okay with, should we make a motion to put it on the budget?
I, Mr. Chair, I would recommend making a denial request for today's request and further move to place it on the 2024 budget discussion list.
Okay, so the motion would be to deny the, the request today, but put it on the budget hearing, as a budget hearing request. That would be the appropriate motion for today.
I'd make that motion.
That's seconded.
It's been moved by Drews and seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries to one no from Ms. Hancock. So you're going to be go, put on the budget hearing, so what we'll probably do is give you notice when your item comes up, Tom, and you can send a representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
Thank you. Item number 17, status hearing for application to establish right away for, to an isolated tract pursuant to SDL 31-22-1, Cross Sabers. Do we have anybody that's got a doc on that? Oh, we got quite a few. Okay, who we got first? I got Zed Brains first.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, he's on. Okay, Zed, yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, I'm on Zoom. I don't see who is there right now, so I apologize about that. Yeah, so our attorney should be representing us, he should be there, but, yeah.
Who's, who's your attorney?
What was that?
Who's your attorney? Who is your attorney?
One sec.
Sir, Jeff Collins, I'm the attorney for the race.
Jeff Collins, yes.
Okay, did you want Jeff to speak on your behalf?
Yes, that would be great, unless I need to make some comments, I don't mind.
Okay.
So Mr. Riggins here is also, he represents Cross Sabers, and my understanding from the, the, what we received from the county is it's a status update. We've exchanged proposals to try to resolve this with some offers. Mr. Riggins' client's engineer is looking at the proposals we submitted, and so hopefully we'll get a response, and we're still working to try and, and resolve this issue.
So you guys are probably looking for a motion to postpone indefinitely?
Well, I think that we had a hearing date set. This was a status hearing date set for March 7th. At this point, I, I think we would like to keep that on there to keep this thing moving, and if we can't get an agreement, bring it to the, the county.
Move to continue to March 7th.
Second.
Let's look at that date for that.
That work, Holly?
Yep, that's the next Commission meeting date.
Next Commission meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So we have a motion to, and you guys are okay with continuing to March 7th?
Yes, yes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, motion made by Hancock, seconded by Lassiter to post, or continue to March 7th with the applicant's rec, uh, support.
Yes.
Okay, both applicants.
Correct.
Okay, so there we go. Any further discussion from the public? I do have speaker request forms, is everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir, that, that's perfect for us. Me and my father should be there in person.
Okay, so that'll, that'll take care of our speaker request forms. Hold on, we have one person, sir.
Yeah.
And you are?
Good morning. Matt Henderson, I'm one of the speakers there.
Okay.
Just on behalf of Cross Sabers, the family, the partnership, thank you for your time, and again, to be sound repetitive, but nobody's as tired as, it doesn't matter as much you are as we are, but we thank you for your time, council will take care of it, and we move forward. We think that the proposals that are set forth are more than reasonable, and we look forward to resolution. Thank you.
Great. We'd like to get it taken care of March 7th.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All in favor of the motion to move to March 7th, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I do not see Janet Sailor in our, oh, there's Annette, sorry. Next is I'd make two items from the Treasurer, and it'll be Annette Brandt.
Good morning, Commission. Annette Brandt, Chief Deputy Treasurer. I'm here today just respectfully to request the approval of the acceptance of two late assessment freeze applications that were provided to the Treasurer's Office to allow the qualification approval for the 2022 tax year, regardless of their late arrival. The owners have shown sufficient documentation substantiating the late filing to our office. I'm requesting a motion to approve both, but would require separate motions for each.
Okay, and is there any public comment on this? I see none. I'll go to the Commission. Does anybody have any comments?
Mr. Chair.
Or a motion?
I'll move to approve motion one, move to approve the reclamation of the 2022 taxes, pay 2023 total valuation of $181,627 using the established base year of equalization for parcel 2999 to be baited in the amount of $95,506 or $1,336.70 in taxes under an assessment freeze program.
Excuse me, motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion from the public, Commission? And seconded. Any discussion from the public? Commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews?
I'd make the motion to approve the recalculation of the 2020, 2022 taxes payable 2023 total valuation of $144,266 using the established base year of qualification for ID number 32290 valuation to be abated in the amount of $69,480 under assessment freeze program.
Any public, any public comment? Any from the commission?
I, I, excuse me, I think that it does have to have the 97244 in taxes for that amount in the motion as well.
Well.
I would, I would add that.
Second.
Thank you.
Been moved by Drews and seconded by Lassiter. Any public comment? Any commission comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Annette.
Thank you.
Next, we come to items from equalizations from Director Shannon Rittenberger. And what we're going to do, Shannon, is we're going to take these all up at once, and then we'll have a commissioner read them all off at once if they, if they, if the motion is to approve them all.
That's, that's fine with me. I wanted to add, last meeting I said we were pretty much done with these. Well, I don't, didn't realize there was still coming, some coming through the system. You can see the, the reasons for them. This is just more of the same what we do this time of year.
Yeah, this is quite a few this time around. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Rittenberg? Seeing none? I'd look for a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve item 19.
I, we still need it right into record, the whole thing.
Whole thing?
Yeah. Sorry, sorry, but we have to have it into.
Okay, move to approve the abatement applications for tax year 2022 for the following parcels. Barbara Rolfs, parcel eight zero zero eight seven eight two, $17.68. Bob and Sandra Jacober, parcel eight zero one 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 three one, $41.18. Ellsworth Development, parcel four twenty five, $219.56. And parcel two thirty nine, $1,821.43. James F. Serone, parcel five nine two eight four, $1,003.56. Secretary of Housing for parcel seven two zero one nine, $11.38. Parcel seven two zero two one, $1,268.58. And parcel seven two zero two zero, $11.38. City of Rapid City for parcel seven one two two one, $24.2. Parcel seven one two two two, $17.70. Parcel four two two five seven, $307.60. Parcel five two nine seven eight, $8,746.84. Parcel one, parcel seven one three six three, $434.50. Parcel seven one three six five, $40.26. Parcel six five oh seven eight, $18.58. Parcel six three four one four, $18.58. Parcel seven one two two zero, $7.60. Parcel seven one two one nine, $7.60. And parcel two four nine six six, $14.68. Nada Archita, parcel eight zero zero nine two three four, $72.88. Northwestern Engineering Company, parcel eight zero zero nine six two four, $119.6. David A. Beers, parcel eight zero zero eight zero six six, $66.82. Dustin T. Gillyard, parcel six five three nine seven, $1,616.84. Kaylee Meeks, parcel one six zero one, $2,354.96. Marvin Brad, parcel four seven zero seven seven, $1,750, $1,750.96. Lauren D. Prang, parcel three four 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 four, $822.39. And Pennington County, parcel five two two one one, $11,438.22.
Thank you, Ron. That was 27 items, correct?
I'll second that.
There was, and then we have a second. Is there any comment from the public?
I think Shannon should present a gold star to Commissioner Roskinak for.
For reading all that.
Do that at the next meeting, give him a gold star sticker.
Okay, we got a motion for approval and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Item number 20. This is from the public defender's office. I'll recognize Director Eric Richard.
Good morning, Commissioner. This was, we had bought a refrigerator. We passed a hat, bought a refrigerator for a satellite office, and then it stopped working. So we called K and D Appliance to fix it. Unfortunately, it was not repairable. Apparently, I know that the, at least, I don't know if it's HR, the county is reviewing these sort of major appliances. Policy, I don't know where that status is. But in any event, at this point, we just need to get the bill paid. So if the county pays for it, fine. If not, I'll write a check. So that's what I'm here for.
So Eric, isn't this the, the same refrigerator that you tried to purchase and then had to get private?
Mm-hmm.
Privately?
Yes, it is.
And so when I come up across this, I thought, even with our commission office, when ours went out, we went out, come together and had our own, at our, at our own expense fixed or replaced. So I find this a little out of place to be asking for a repair when really it was your purchase.
I agree.
That's fine.
I, I, I look at the commission, but I mean, that's my thought process on it is, is all the other departments, if they want something along those lines, the employees and so forth go together to help get that done. The repair, I could see if, if you didn't know that this wasn't county property, you thought it was something to get repaired. But this one here, I think you guys knew you purchased it. I kind of think it's your responsibility. That's my thoughts. I don't know what the rest of the commission thinks.
Mr. Chair, I don't think it's the money. I think we've been through this before and we've taken a position. And if we approve this today, then it's like we're countering something that we've already done. And so as much as I'd like to say yes, approve it, I just think that we're setting the precedence. And there again, it's not the money. But I just want to be consistent to how we've acted on these items before.
I, I was going to say something along those lines, too, but I was going to say, this is not that old. How, how old is this refrigerator?
Well, we bought it, we bought a used one for, you know, several hundred dollars. So.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. I just wanted to, I was thinking it's kind of new. I would think that maybe it's still under warranty, but.
You know, I've taken so many of these that, you know, donate them in a habitat of rat humanity, like never die. And of course, the one we bought died. So that's fine.
So what I gather is, well, my second comment would be, Eric, is appliances like refrigerators are hard, expensive to repair. You're probably better out buying newer one with a warranty or if another one, if you guys purchase another one and it goes out, I would probably just eat it. But.
Yeah.
From what I gather, I'd, I'd need a motion to either approve or deny.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Move to deny the request for payment exception for the K and D appliance repair invoice in the amount of $111.83.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any public comment? Any further comment, Eric?
Mr. Chair.
Mr.
I just want to point out, Eric, the refrigerator that we have in the commission office, actually, we got that from the, when we sold the La Crosse Street property. Ours was going out. So that's where that came from. And when we got it, we had to change the door. We had to clean it. But so we're just, like I said, we're just, yeah, refrigerators got to happen though, I assume.
Motion on the floors for denial. Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Eric. Next, we come to items for compensation committee, and I'll recognize Ms. Carol Bancroft. And this item needs no motion to them.
Correct. Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Bancroft, Pennington County HR Director. That the compensation committee has a recommendation for policy three dot 14, which is the safe harbor policy. And on this, we do have, for your reference in the packet, there's exhibit A, which is the revised version, the clean copy. And then we also have the original, which is exhibit B, that shows the strikeouts on it. So in paragraph one and two, it's simply correcting some of the grammatical language. In paragraph three, the seventh bullet, that we revised the language to mirror the FLSA verbiage to make sure that it was compliant with the law. And then on paragraph six and seven, that we deleted the entire paragraphs as it relates to partial day absences for exempt employees requiring four hour minimum deduction from employees at crew benefit time. And the sentiment of the compensation committee is that each department head or elected official will retain the responsibility to monitor the exempt employees and their schedules and address any abuse as a performance or a behavior issue. So adopting the proposed revisions to policy three dot 14 safe harbor is a recommendation of the compensation committee. And as such, it cannot be acted on until the following meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Does anybody have any questions for Carol?
Good job, Ms. Carol.
No questions so far. So thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the next meeting. Take action now. Next on our agenda is items from Commission Manager Holly Hennings. And this has to do with our annual review and update of the bylaws and rules of procedure.
Yes, Commissioners, we worked on this back in January, and I am just bringing forth to you the updated changes that were made. The majority of them are just statutory changes, updates that, since this had last been done in 2012. So I'd be happy to stand for any questions, if anybody has any.
I, I don't have any questions. I went through it, and I think a lot of it was the clerical stuff that you changed. And I think one of the main ones was, I just wanted to bring to light was the teleconferences. You readjust that to where if we zoom in, we don't have to take a roll call vote every time around. Am I correct?
Correct. That was a statute change.
Statute change. And so that kind of corrected in our books, too. So that's a plus for us.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Have Holly on any, on any of the amendments to the bylaws and rules? I'd look for a motion to approve the updates and amendments to the bylaws and rules of procedure as presented.
Move to approve the updates and the amendments to the bylaws and rules of procedure as presented.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. It's moved by Roskinak, seconded by Drews. Any discussion? Anything from the public? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Next, we have approval of the vouchers.
Sure.
Mr. Drews?
I'd move approval of the vouchers in the amount of $2,517,723.70.
Motion, motion was made by Drews and seconded by Roskinak to approve the vouchers. Any public comment? Any from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we come to items from public and speaker requests. I don't have any public speaker request comments or requests. With that, I, we're moving along pretty good. We do not have a board of adjustments today. You still need a few minutes to have planning set up?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it'd be my recommendation on the board, go in and address your executive session items.
Okay.
And we can't start planning until 10:30.
Oh, still can.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought that was just board of adjustments.
Nope.
Okay, I'd look for motion to go into.
Still moved.
Executive session.
Still moved.
For S D C, it's been moved by Hancock, seconded by Drews, for S D C L dash one twenty five two one for personal matters and S D C L one dash twenty five two three for contractual pending litigation matters. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're going to come out of, need a motion to come out of an executive session. Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinak, come out of executive session, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With that, I'll recognize Mr. Ron Roskinak.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to, to move Ming to dispatcher one at B 22 dash six at $20.65 an hour effective January the 22nd, 2023.
It's been moved by Roskinak, seconded by Drews. Any public comment?
Authorizing back pay?
Yes.
He didn't say that.
Oh, he didn't say. Retroact, needs to be retroactive.
I believe I said January.
But the authorized back pay?
Yeah, let me get, let me find that real quick. Okay, the, the motion was to move, is to place Ming Ning at B 22 step six at $20.65 an hour effective January 22nd, 2023, and authorized backpack. That was the motion.
Yep.
And it was seconded by Drews. And no public comment? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to planning commission items. So items for planning and zoning, I'll recognize Cody. Uncontested hearings.
Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item A is planning and development overlay review, PU 22 dash zero six. It is to review a planning and development overlay for a single family residence to use as a music school, event and breakfast, and do include accessory structures. This was last reviewed in August of 2022. It appears that the applicants are meeting all of their conditions. So staff is recommending approval of the extension of planning and development PU, PU D, planning and development overlay PU 22 dash zero six with conditions. And then item D is their amendments that we'll hear later.
That's good to clarify. Thank you. You going through more? Okay. Nothing else? Okay, I have a speaker request one, but this is more for item D, the, the changes. This one is, stays the same. So is there any discussion from the commission? Seeing none? Planning Commission has a recommendation to move, to approve the extension of the planned unit development overlay review PU 22 dash zero six with 29 conditions. This comes from the planning commission with a recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the extension of planned unit development overlay review PU 22 dash zero six with 29 conditions.
Okay. Then moved and seconded, who was seconded?
I did.
Mr. Drews? Any public comment? Any more from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to item number B. Cody?
Item B is waiver of building permit and conditional use permit penalty fee for David Roland. The applicant, David Roland, is requesting to waive a building permit penalty fee in the amount of $774 and a conditional use permit penalty fee of $300. The applicant applied for a building permit, COVP 19 dash oh three nineteen, June 7. COVP 19-0319, June 17, 2019. In that permit, he permitted a single-family residence with 2,376 square feet of finished space and attached garage with 1,164 feet of square feet of, oh, sorry, unfinished square, unfinished space of 1,164 square feet above the garage and a 287 square foot porch. The penalty fee that is in question is in regards to the applicant finishing the area above the garage without a building permit. While the applicant stated that he did not know that the area above the garage was not permitted, he himself indicated on his building permit application that this is unfinished space. As you can see on the application, the garage is 1,164 square feet, and he marks on the application 1,164 square feet of unfinished space. Also, the applicant stated that there are only three bedrooms in the residence, as you can see on the left on that application. If you include the loft in that permit, it would be additional two bedrooms. The applicant would not have been able to apply for the building permit if the loft above the garage was finished, as it would have required a conditional use permit for multifamily dwelling. Therefore, the applicant is also in need of a conditional use permit. Since the second residence is already existing, the applicant will need to pay the conditional use penalty fee. The violation was discovered when the applicant came in to discuss renting the second residence as a vacation home rental. So with that, staff is going to recommend to deny the applicant's request to waive the penalty fees for the building permit and the conditional use permit. As the applicant was the one who stated that the loft above the garage would be unfinished in the building permit application, and if it would have been permitted, the loft is finished space at the time of the building permit application, the conditional use permit would have been required, and that would have eliminated the need for that penalty fee.
Thank you, Cody. Is the applicant in the audience?
Morning, Commissioners. Greg Strowman, on behalf of David Rowland. I have David Rowland here with me. He's here to appeal the penalties. In the ordinance, it says that the fee is doubled for any use or work commenced prior to approval of a required permit, and penalty fee will not be assessed if work performed without a permit arises out of an emergency, et cetera, et cetera. And then it says the Board of Commissioners may waive penalty fees if mitigating factors are present. I appreciate that staff has detected this. There is a technical violation here, but I do believe that the reason that this ordinance allows for a waiver of penalty fees is if mitigating factors are present. And I believe in this case, there are mitigating factors. The first thing is, I guess, a penalty also connotes some sort of intentional wrongdoing. At least, to me, it does. There was no trickery or shenanigans going on here. This is a first-time builder. He had his builder prepare the permit, and he did file an owner's statement approving it. It's, as was pointed out, it is listed as unfinished space, the area above the garage, and it has never been used as a multifamily residence. It's only been a three-bedroom place. And the way this even, this violation even came to bear was when he wanted to look into vacation home rentals, he came to me, and I said, well, we need to go talk to planning to see what we need to do to qualify for a vacation home rental. And that's when it was discovered that since the time that, of the initial construction, he has added or has finished the above-the-garage area in preparation for this vacation home rental. And he's always listed everything that was there and just didn't know that he had to go back and get a new permit to finish that space and that it now had transformed into a multifamily. This is an honest mistake, and I think that two substantial penalties is a little out of the ordinary for this situation. And we'd ask that the commission would waive the penalties. And obviously, we'll pay whatever permits apply, just asking that they not be doubled at this time.
Thank you, Greg. David, did you have any comment?
The only thing I would add is that the building plans that were submitted showed the building completely finished. And so just an assumption on my part, I think, that when those building plans were submitted and my builder got the permit, that I assumed that it was for the whole thing. I did that work. My builder didn't finish that part. I did, but I did it concurrent with the construction of the house. So there was no delay. I was working on that part as he was finishing the rest. So it's just an honest mistake from me.
But David, you did the work on above-the-garage yourself, and your builder did the rest of the house.
That's correct.
So the builder applied for what was supposed, he was going to do, and you had an agreement with the builder to do the other part. Am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
Is this the first home you've ever owned?
This is the first home we've ever built.
First we've ever owned. Okay. The reason why I ask you that is because a lot of people, when in a new build, will have an unfinished basement, and then they finish their basements and don't come and get permits with the city or wherever they go. So most people know that. So that's why I asked that.
Yes.
Is there any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Last.
Do you have that agreement? That you would do that while he was doing the other?
I may be able to, I don't know that we ever put that in writing. The, I mean, the, I don't know that I had that in writing. The builder was a friend of ours. I mean, he's licensed and all of that, but it was just part of us trying to make budget, was to say, I'll do that part of it. So I can go back and look and see if that was ever written down.
Chairman.
Mrs. Hagcock.
So, Mr. Rowland, when did you start finishing the top of the garage?
As soon, as soon as the garage was, the lower part was ready, then I began the work on the, above the garage while he was finishing the finished work inside.
That was two years ago, a year ago?
Oh, the house was built in 2019.
Right.
So it's been done for a little while now.
For a couple of years?
Yes.
So it's been finished with, and how many, so it has five bedrooms now?
It does.
Okay. And you never registered or had the Register of Deeds or Equalization come in and look at it? Because is it registered with five bedrooms in Register of Deeds? Or is it registered with three bedrooms? Does anybody know?
Mr. Chair.
I know that, when, I know that as far as like the septic system, when we put, when all of that was going in, I had conversations about having that as a five-bedroom house. It was rated for five bedrooms. In fact, while we were, even while we were in the middle of construction, the county tax guy came out several times to reassess and change the assessment. And he has it listed as five bedrooms.
Okay.
So we've been paying.
Yeah. So it's listed as five bedrooms. You were paying as five bedrooms.
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is that he had a building permit for three bedrooms, but he listed it as five bedrooms. Cody, you have something on that?
Cody Sac, Environmental Planner. So Equalization has it listed. Actually, it's a four-bedroom, not a five-bedroom.
Okay.
Okay. So it's.
It's pretty close. So he wasn't really trying to hide anything. I think he's, it's kind of weird that it doesn't say five bedroom, but it looked like if you were doing, it's hard to distinguish with not being there at the time because you, the builder, you had it at three. You ended up with five. I don't know what you were intentionally going to put four in there. Equalization has it at four. You're paying taxes on four. So, I mean, he's paying, he's paying the price for a four-bedroom, you guys. Most of the time, I'd make you pay the fee, if it was me personally, because it's, but, and I also would say your builder needed to know what he was doing. But at that time, again, you were going to finish it, and I don't think your intention until now is going to be to rent it out. So.
Mr. Chair. I got Ron.
At this point, you have a penalty fee in the amount of, for conditional use P, to waive the building permit, to waive the building permit fee and a conditional use P fee in the amount of 300. So either way, would he have to pay, Lloyd, maybe you know this, or Cody, would he have to pay, would he had to pay more for a four or five bedroom to build it? Would the builder have had to pay more money for it?
Correct.
How much more?
Cody Sac, Environmental Planner. Back in 2019, I don't know the amount for total square footage, but he would have had to, the permit fee would have been more if he would have permitted that as finished space. I'd have to look into it. I don't know whether.
And maybe that's what you charge him for the penalty fee and the building permit and the conditional use. I don't think he had any idea. So I think, for me, it'd be fair, the penalty fee for the building permit, you know, because you did build, but the penalty fee for the conditional use, I don't, I don't think he had any idea at the time. This wasn't intentional. So that's my thoughts.
Okay. Thanks, Deb. I'm going to, I got two people in line. I got Mr. Roskneck.
Mr. Chair, my question would be, is there some, halfway on this? Can, do we have to go all the way or nothing as far as the fee?
I, Cody, I think what the commission's looking for is some options besides just yes or no. I think another option, from what I've just heard so far, could be instead of double the fees, just a permit fee and what those costs are instead of the double.
Yeah, so the permit fee to do that, to do the lofting of the garage is that $773. So you would double that. So that's where that penalty fee comes in, because it comes in at what the permit.
The double, so the 774 is double the fee, right?
So, no. So the building permit fee, when he comes in and applies for the finished square footage above the garage, will be $774. The penalty fee is double that, so it'd be an additional $744, $770, $774.
Another $770. So I think what they're saying, since you want to do an Airbnb, I'm thinking there, and you're, you did build it. I think with the, I'm not going to try and put words in the commission's mouth, but what they're saying is you should pay for the permit fee.
Yep.
But I don't think they want to do the double. So the option would be that they pay for the building permit fee?
Right.
Solely.
He'll, he'll have to pay the penalty fee to get the building permit anyway. So it would just be what the, if the board makes him pay the penalty fee or not. And I will, just on one point of clarification, he did, they did state that they signed the owner's statement. If you read the owner's statement, it says that the owners reviewed what was in the application on there. So the applicant should have reviewed that was unfinished square footage. And also, if you look on the back of the building permit, the reason why they had to upgrade their septic system to five bedrooms is because when you have unfinished square footage, it kicks in additional requirements for septic. So the way I read that permit is they came in for a three-bedroom septic, or septic install, or our septic inspector noticed unfinished square footage and made the installer put in the additional two bedrooms for five bedrooms.
Okay.
But he's paying the taxes on the five bedroom, then, if he had to put it for that, right?
It would be whatever the Equalization assesses it. And right now, it looks like they're assessing on four bedrooms. I think Jason and I looked the other day, and there was no accessory permit in the, in tracts. I don't know what Equalization is assessing.
Four bedrooms plus. Thank you.
So if I get this right, the 774 is for the conditional use permit, and there is a $300 penalty fee?
No, no. So the $774 is the additional, what would he, he'd be charged as a penalty fee for the building permit. The conditional use permit is an extra, is double the application fee, which is $300. So in all told, he'd be paying $720 for the conditional use permit plus the 774 and an additional 774.
Okay. I'm going to go let people think about this for a little bit, and I'm going to go, are you done, Ron?
I'm about ready to make a motion.
I got one more speaker.
So as I read the information, they went from a basic building permit for a three-bedroom home. They'd applied for a five-bedroom. It would have required a conditional use permit. Changes it substantially from what it was going to be.
Yep.
So if the original intention was to actually go to the five bedrooms, and they made the application only for finishing three bedrooms, there's a huge difference here in regard to it.
Cody Sac, Environmental Planner. I will clarify. So this happens actually a lot at the counter. Someone will come in with a building permit, plans, either for an unfinished basement or for, they'll have plans for their basement, but they'll do unfinished, and they'll come back in two years or let a different person finish it. Or they'll come in with plans like this, and the person at the counter will tell them, well, you need a conditional use permit if you're going to do this. And then they'll leave it unfinished square footage and say, well, we'll come back and do that later. I need to get building on my house. I can't speak to that in this case because I wasn't there. I wasn't the person who took it in. But it is fairly common for someone to come in with a full set of plans to finish a loft and then just do unfinished square footage or an unfinished basement.
Okay. Do you have any follow-up? Mr. Drew?
I'm done.
Cody, so what I gather is staff's recommendation is to move to deny the request, the request from David Rowland to waive the building permit penalty fee in the amount of, this is where the confusion's coming in, is staff's recommendation is to deny the building permit penalty fee in the amount of 774. This is where the confusion's coming in. And a conditional use permit penalty fee of $300.
Yeah, so Cody Sac, Environmental Planner, Yeah, so Cody Sack, environmental planner, even though he's not renting that additional residence out, it's still considered a multifamily dwelling, so it requires a conditional use permit. Um, the board can't waive the actual application fees, but you can waive, um, one of the seven hundred and seventy-four fee requirements and that additional three hundred dollars for the conditional use permit.
So this would be the actual fee?
Penalties.
Pen, penalty fee, yeah. Not the fee for the building permit. The fee for the building permit will still be seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
You guys are willing to pay that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so now I'm on track. Now, are you guys?
Yes, chairman. So what, what he's saying is they have to pay the actual other seven seventy-four, the actual three hundred. So I'm in favor of taking the seven seventy-four and the three hundred off. My thing is, is he's not a contractor. If he was a contractor coming up here and telling me this, I'd be like, you gotta be kidding me. Number two, um, he's paying taxes on four. He's not paying taxes on three. Um, I'm listening to Cody and those guys on, on their issues and people do that. But you can tell, anybody, a lot of times in this audience, you're gonna do, you have to go file a CUP in two years. You have to file a conditional use permit in two years, and who usually understands it?
Is that a motion?
Hold on a second. But someone said, Cody was saying that, but, um, you're using government lingo on people that, that later on, they're like, but they do understand the building and stuff like that. It's not like they're always trying to play a game. The other thing is, like I said, my bottom line is he's paying the taxes. And yes, um, you could make the motion if you like, but I'm in favor of this. But, um, I've been up here long enough that you'd be surprised what you're explaining to people at the time. They have no idea what you're talking about. So, um, Cody, um, I respect what you're doing and what you're saying, but, um, not all that is an understanding when you're explaining all that to people.
Yeah, so I, I just want to clarify. The conditional use permit, we wouldn't have told him in two years he needed a conditional use permit. If he was coming in to finish the loft above at the time, we wouldn't have even taken in the building permit. He would have had to get the conditional use permit first before he got the building permit. That's why I'm saying that happens all the time, and then people will do the part, they'll permit the part that doesn't require the conditional use permit, and then either come back later on, or in this case, finish the loft and then come back.
Okay. I, okay, I think Mr. Roskneck has a motion.
Yeah, right, in the spirit of fairness, I'm going to make a motion that we waive the, uh, penalty fee of seven hundred and seventy-four dollars and the, and the fee for the conditional use permit penalty in the amount of three hundred dollars.
Okay.
Moved by Roskneck, accepted by Hagcock. Any discussion from the commission? Any from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir. So you're still paying the
Yes.
conditional use permit fee and moving forward with what you want to do?
Yes. Thank you very much. Greg's gonna help you follow the rest of the rules the rest of the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we come to item C, Public Hearing of Plan Unit Development Overlay PU twenty-three oh one.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item C is Plan Unit Development Overlay PU twenty-three dash zero one. It's to allow a plan unit development overlay for a specialty resort. Uh, the applicant and landowner is Rodeo Farm and Ranch, John and Emily Rowe. They are in the audience if there are any questions. Uh, location of the property is one-two-one-seven-five Deerfield Road, involves nineteen point three eight acres. Uh, current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Deerfield Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, the zoning ordinance, section two sixteen, lists the following standards and requirements that shall apply in a PUD overlay district. The answers are on the screens. I'll read them aloud. Uh, number one, yes, the uses of the pro, the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in an agricultural district. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are the type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking of an agriculture district. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is nineteen point three eight acres. Number five, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is owned by the applicants and managers, John and Emily Rowe. Number six, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are not designed to be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare. And number seven, the answers are on this chart. Again, the zoning ordinance, section five-ten, uh, lists seven criteria. The planning commissioner or the board of commissioners may consider and review of a conditional use permit application. Again, the answers are on the screens. I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the use of the proposed PUD overlay district should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, yes, the use of the proposed PUD overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Number three, yes, the use of the proposed PUD overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district contains adequate utilities, access road drainage, and other necessary site improvements. During the building permit process, an onsite wastewater treatment system will be required. Number five, yes, the existing approach will be provided, will provide ingress and egress to minimize traffic congestion on Deerfield Road. And number six, yes, the requested use conform to regulations in an agricultural district with an approved PUD overlay district. And number seven, yes, future land use identifies the property as agriculture district. Specialty T I P resorts are consistent within this district. Uh, currently on the property, there is a single-family residence that was built in nineteen seventy-one. Uh, another single-family residence that was built in nineteen forty, a forty-by-sixty utility building, and several accessory structures built prior to nineteen ninety-four. This was routed off for interdepartmental review. Uh, the county highway is requesting that approach permit be filed. And county addressing, the road that provides access must be named. The existing address numbers are out of order with surrounding properties to the west, and each cabin will require a separate address for emergency services. Uh, she spoke to the applicant and said that it would be the best to just name the road and alleviate any confusion. While the applicants are requesting PUD overlay to allow rental cabins, primitive campsites, caretakers' residence, horse riding and boarding, family reunion and weddings, includes five rental cabins, up to four campsites, one caretaker residence, and an existing barn to be used, uh, for family and, uh, family reunion and weddings. Uh, conditional use permits, U twenty dash fourteen, uh, which is for bed and breakfast, will be reviewed and ended if this PUD overlay is approved as it is no longer required. And staff finds no significant issues with that bunch of requests, as the uses requested are in harmony with either a use permit or conditional use permit in an agriculture district. So with that, staff is recommending approval of plan unit development overlay PU twenty-three dash zero one, uh, with conditions. With, uh, the planning commission also recommended approval, however, they added two conditions, um, that the applicant works with the Pennington County Highway Department, installing a stop sign and any additional road signage at the applicant's expense, and the applicants provide guests with the local daily flyer conditions.
Thank you, Cody. So, planning commission's recommendations on this item was to improve that PUD overlay PU twenty-three oh one with twenty-nine conditions, correct?
Correct.
And they added two?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to put that on, or is there any questions from, Cody, from the commission?
We have approval of thirty-one conditions on a PUD.
Motion's been made with the recommendation of the planning commissioners I just stated. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Roskneck? Is there any public comment on this?
There's one.
Anymore?
Twenty-nine conditions.
Twenty-nine conditions. And that includes the two that the planning commission added on there, so that's twenty-nine total. Okay. So we got that clarified? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next we come to item D, and Cody, before you get started on this, I want to lay out a little bit of, of ground rules for our audience. This is an item that we've had on our agenda several times, and had plenty of discussion. And this item is to do some changes. Um, I'm gonna let Cody go through this, but I want to, I've got about seven or eight speaker request forms. And this is nothing new to the commission, so we're aware of it. So I'm, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna limit, uh, the speakers to about three minutes apiece when we get to public comment. And then I'll go to applicants and so forth. But one thing I'm gonna do different on this, since we've done this, been before as before, is after you're done, Cody, what I'd like to do is the commission to have a motion on the floor before we take public comment, so they know what they're talking towards. Okay, does that sound fair to everybody? Okay. With that, I'll turn it over to you, Cody.
Okay. Uh, so Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item D is Major Planning and Development Overlay Amendment PU twenty-three dash zero two. It's to amend an existing planning and development overlay to allow a single-family residence to be used as a music school, bed and breakfast, and to include accessory structures. The applicant and landowner is Katie Smirnova and Brett Wallfish. Location of the property is one-three-two-seven-one Condeck Road, and involves seventeen point zero four acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Condeck Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, section two sixteen lists the following standards and requirements that shall apply in a PUD overlay district. The answers are on the screens. I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district conform to the uses by right or conditional uses permitted in an agriculture district. Number two, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district are the type and are located to minimize detrimental influence upon surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district meet the standards governing area density and off-street parking of an agriculture district. Number four, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district involves seventeen acres. Number five, yes, the proposed PUD overlay district is owned by the applicants and managers, Brett Wallfish and Katie Smirnova. Uh, number six, yes, Condeck Road is an average twelve-foot wide road that is not within the road district or maintained by county highway. However, the applicants have submitted plans and have started road improvements to widen the road to eighteen feet wide. And number seven, uh, is, the answers are on this chart. Again, the zoning ordinance, section five-ten, lists seven criteria. The planning commissioner or the board of commissioners may consider and review of the conditional use permit applications. Again, the answers are on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Uh, number one, no, the uses of the proposed PUD overlay district could be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. There's concern from emergency services and staff about the location of the property on a minimally improved road. However, the applicants have begun road improvements to widen the road to eighteen feet wide. Number two, yes, the use of the proposed PUD overlay district should not substantially impair or diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood for the purposes already permitted. The events take place within structures, so there should be no nuisance to the surrounding properties. Number three, yes, the use of the proposed PUD overlay district should not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding properties for uses permitted in the district. Number four, the proposed PUD overlay district contains adequate utilities, access road drainage, and other necessary site improvements. Number five, yes, access to the subject property is through a sixty-six-foot wide access easement, Condeck Road. It's not a maintained road by, uh, the road district or county highway. The road width is on average nine to twelve feet wide. However, the applicants have begun the road improvements to widen the road to eighteen feet wide. Number six, the requested uses conform to the regulations of an agriculture district with an approved PUD overlay. And number seven, yes, future land use is identified as agriculture, large-lot residential, and natural areas consistent with this district. Uh, currently on the property, there is a single-family residence, a twelve-by-twenty shed, a sixteen-by-twenty-four shed, and two sheds under a hundred and forty-four square feet that are sitting on some cinder blocks. Uh, the applicants have also applied for a onsite wastewater treatment system and a stormwater permit. This was routed off for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. Uh, the applicants are requesting to amend their PUD overlay district, uh, to allow camp concerts, bed and breakfast. The amendment will affect the following conditions. Uh, condition number two, that there be no more than four practice cabins. The requested change would be to allow for ten practice cabins, which was the original request. Uh, condition number three, that there be no more than one music camp per calendar year, not to exceed thirty people, including the residents. Uh, the requested change would be to allow for two camps, not to exceed thirty people, one in the summer and one in the winter. For condition for the concerts, after the planning commission meeting, uh, staff met with the applicants and they are no longer requesting the additional concerts. Uh, they are just going to do the one that was already approved in the amendment, so they are no longer requesting the additional performances. Um, so condition, then condition five, that's the number of guest staying at the bed and breakfast, not exceed six guests from a single family. The requested change would be allow twenty overnight guests, or whatever the maximum occupancy allowed by the, uh, state health department would be, or no more than three groups. The applicants are in the process of widening Condeck Road to eighteen feet wide. Road improvements should be completed within a few weeks, depending on the weather. Uh, so staff is recommending, uh, approval of plan unit, major planning and development overlay amendment, uh, PU twenty-three dash zero two with conditions. However, the planning commission recommended to deny without prejudice.
Okay, thank you. Cody, you got anything more you need to add?
I do not.
Okay, what I'm gonna do next is, we had a commissioner who was on the planning commission with that recommendation. Is there any update you want to give from the planning commission that you attended?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think what the planning commission did was, you know, it kind of went to deny, but they, they're, they, we were open-minded and we decided to deny without prejudice because, just like we did earlier today with Cross Favors, we're trying to find some kind of a common ground between these two groups. And that's why we made the decision that we did, uh, the planning commission.
Okay, because the planning commission's, uh, just so everybody knows, the planning commission's recommendation was to deny without prejudice of the PUD overlay amendment PU thirty-two.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Can I get some clarification from Commissioner Roskneck? Y'all, y'all decided to deny without prejudice, so to what, to encourage both sides to have some conversation and clarify some of the concerns?
Well, one of the concerns that the planning commission had is, we felt that the request was, uh, they're asking too much, uh, for the possible impact it could have on the neighborhood. So, there again, it's just a matter of trying to see if there's some common ground between the two groups. But, uh, the way the suggested amendment, uh, I think was just too hard for us to accept that.
Was this a unanimous vote?
What's that?
Was this, was a unanimous vote from the planning commission?
Right.
Okay. Any further questions from Mr. Roskneck from the planning commission? Any questions for Cody?
Mr. Chair. Cody, I was talking to Highway Superintendent Joe Miller, and a lot of the concerns that I hear from the, the public and the community, not necessarily from the landowners in this particular case, is about traffic. Do we have any ADT? And I don't think, um, Joe Miller has ADT stats for that road. But, um, if we, whichever way we move forward, I think it would be wise for us maybe to ask Joe Miller, as he's coming up here, if he'd be interested in doing some road counts now to get a baseline, uh, during an off-season, and then the next time during the, uh, the summer, whenever they're putting on a camp. Just that we have some baseline data, so we can have factual data instead of hearing, uh, conjecture of what the road conditions are as far as the, the amount of traffic that's going through there. Do you mind speaking to that?
Uh, good morning, I think it's still morning, commission, uh, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Uh, as Travis alluded to, yeah, we do have the ability to, uh, conduct traffic counts. We have a, a radar counter, so, uh, especially, we use that in the winter months when we're doing these traffic counts. It counts the, the number of cars that go by it. Um, you know, I, I, I guess it would be up to the commission if they would like us to do that. Uh, we can certainly do that. My only thing is, we probably should invoice the, the, the individuals for something like that, since it's not necessarily on a county road, and sorry Travis, that just come to mind here.
Yeah, that wasn't discussed, but okay.
Yep, absolutely. Um, but ultimately, it's up to you guys whether that happens or not. Um, but yeah, it would be a relatively, um, easy thing for us to do. Put your traffic counter up there, probably take an hour, probably two hours by the time you drive up there and back. Both times, and leave it up there for a week or two weeks to get the traffic count, so.
Okay. Any further questions, Joe? Okay, for summary, Cody?
Thank you, Joe.
The original request was, uh, to do more concerts, and they're, they're taking that off. And that, was that done at planning commission or, or before it came to us?
So that was done after the planning commission. So the planning commission started recommending denial, um, and the applicants were, like, um, brought up in the past that the planning commission and the board worked with them on, on taming down their request. Uh, the planning commission didn't seem very, um, keen to that idea at, at the time. So they met with, uh, staff after the meeting, a couple days after the meeting, um, and took the concerts off. So the condition would go back to the original condition of approval number four. Um, I would just state that there be no more than one performance slash showcase event per year with the attendance, uh, limited to fifty individuals, uh, for the Rushmore Music Festival Board of Directors.
Okay, and then what, one of the other changes from previous approval is that instead of six for bed and breakfast, now it would go, if this was approved, they want twenty?
Correct. Um, so the state health department allows a maximum of ten units to be rented out, uh, so two-person per bedroom, that'd be the ten units, uh, for, for twenty people. Um, I believe the applicants mentioned that they would be willing to do sixteen or eighteen approximately, um, but they want, they want the twenty. Um, the one, one of the hang-ups in, in the previous, uh, meetings with the bed and breakfast was the road. Um, so they're improving the road, so they, they're requesting that they can do their bed and breakfast.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, I, I got, okay, Mr. Roskneck.
You know, Condeck Road's one thing, but, uh, we also discussed the ingress and egress off of Highway sixteen. And living out there and driving Highway sixteen three or four times a week, I just see some real danger, dangerous situations, not all the time, but, uh, last summer, I almost wrecked because there was a truck and a trailer pulling off on the Condeck, and that whole lane was blocked. And when you're going sixty-five, seventy-five miles an hour, that's a concern. I think we were more concerned with the ingress and egress of, off of Highway sixteen than actually the conditions, uh, found on Condeck Road.
Cody?
Yes, and this request was routed to South Dakota DOT for this amendment, and it was requi, and it was sent to them on the original request as well. Uh, both times they said no comments. They don't see the need for a turn lane there, or they didn't want to put in a turn lane. Um, so we, we don't have authority over, our planning department doesn't have authority over Highway sixteen, so we can't require additional.
Okay, I'll let you take a moment.
They have, uh, the applicants just submitted an email from, um, Steve, who's the regional traffic engineer for DOT. Uh, it says that they would not recommend an intersection warning sign. Uh, national guidance discourages the overuse of warning signs, saying unnecessary use of warning signs. Um, so it appears that DOT is not interested in doing anything.
I think we heard that last time, too.
Yeah.
Uh, next we, are you done?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Laster.
Cody, I just got to ask you a couple of questions, too, with the operation of that bed and breakfast. They've been operating that bed and breakfast currently, is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I don't believe that they've started.
So, so the next part of that question is, if I remember correctly, the condition said that the road had to be squared away and everything before they could operate the Airbnb, so?
So, it was, um, so we approved them for six people. It was, any increase in the number staying at the bed and breakfast or increase in the number of music camps per year will require Condeck Road to be improved to a minimum of eighteen feet wide, um, south, southeast of the bridge to the driveway of the single-family residence. And if the bed and breakfast is not operated, the applicants permanently stabilize the council on Condeck Road.
So essentially, they could do it currently up to six, and then?
Correct, but they wanted more people, so they took the Board of Commissioners' recommendation or requirement to build that road to eighteen feet, um, so that's what they're.
And then one final question about final stabilization. Um, I understand they have two permit, uh, wa, is it water drainage permits or?
They have two stormwater permits, one for their personal property, for their house, and one for the road.
And how's the one behind their house? Because obviously, if that's where the Airbnb is going to be, you know, for safety purposes, I think we'd want to make sure that that was stabilized, even, even though we're talking about the road for regular Airbnb for up to sixteen or eighteen or whatever it ends up being. Um, what's the timeline of those, and when can they, just so the public knows and so we know, when can they? when can they operate based on those permits?
So the, the stormwater permit and the, and the PUD are, are, would be two separate permits. Um, if, if the board wanted to put a limit on when they could operate the bed and breakfast until the final stabilization was done, the, the board can do that. The planning department really can't, 'cause they're two separate permits. Um, but for final stabilization, if you read section five oh seven, you're required to meet, uh, seventy-five percent of, of natural vegetation. Uh, or there's different landscaping options as well, too. Um, so they will be required to do that for both their house permit, which I've already discussed with them about, and with the road permit, which their engineered plans show, um, that they're gonna slope it and then seed it. Um, if that doesn't work, 'cause I know there's concerns with it, um, they'd be required to do something else. It's not like a one and done. The, they will have to meet stabilization for our permit to end and their state permit to end.
Mr. Chair, just a follow-up. Who's got the concerns with the current plan of it?
I believe, uh, reading some of the, um, neighbors' comments that have been submitted, it was the neighbors who have concerns with that. But for the planning department's stance, they paid an engineer to do a lot of work, come up with those plans. Um, so that, so that's what we go with until we're shown that it, it doesn't actually work. And that's final stabilization, so it doesn't need to be done until the very end of the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any, Mr. Drews?
So, Cody, do you know when the end of the project is scheduled for?
Uh, last time I heard, the road was, they said the road was coming along pretty nicely and that it should be within a couple weeks or a month or so. But depending on weather, I know we're supposed to get a lot of weather over the next couple of days. Um, for their house project, it's whenever their A-frames are done. Um, I think the applicants would be able to answer their house one a little better than I would.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Just a refresher, how many homes are in this, in this community on that road?
Homes, I guess I'm not...
Or properties?
Uh, there's quite a few properties, um. I mean, those are all, without counting them, those are all planted lots that take the... Uh, some of these lots up here take access off of, um, Highway sixteen. But all of these lots back here take access generally off of Klondike Road. But I think these ones might have this access off TB Gulch as well.
And then one final question, Mr. Chair. It's governed by a road district, is that correct?
No, there is no, no road district, and it's not maintained by county highway. Uh, it's a private access easement that is just maintained by the individuals who live on that road.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hickok? So, they want to increase the people from six to twenty, right? The events, they want to grow bigger, but, but they decided not to. Okay, so we, we said it wasn't gonna be commercial. It's not commercial, 'cause it's PUD, right? So we're gonna increase the people out there, we're gonna increase the traffic out there, we're gonna increase the parking out there. We're gonna increase the buildings out there. We're not gonna call it commercial, we're gonna call it a PUD. And I keep saying, the problem with the PUD is it disguises what other stuff is. Remember, I talked about that last week, and, or two weeks ago, and I didn't mean that mean on what we were talking about, Ron. I just meant in general, that's why I would never like PUDs. So what happens is, I, I, I like what you're doing, and I think it's amazing. But you're doing it in a residential area. You're doing some really good stuff, but all that affects what's happening around you. You're doing a commercial event. I mean, people are having problems with vacation home rents in their area with having just few people once in a while. You guys are having special events and some huge things commercially on your property, which we're calling a PUD. So, I understand why the neighbors are having issues. I don't think it's so personal for, it may be that personal on you in a, in a certain extent, but I don't think they mean to it, it's because it's commercial business. And they're mad more about that. So, I guess if it was me, I don't care if I have neighbors, but if you put a commercial entity next to me and call it a PUD, I'm gonna have some issues. And I like people to do what they want on their land, but I also like to have rules and regulations followed to a certain extent. So, Cody, my, my concern is that this isn't gonna stop. It's gonna keep getting bigger and bigger, and I feel bad for them, 'cause where they, where they put it. The road going into is not as supported, 'cause the rest of the story on here says that in regards to the turn lanes, a traffic study would need to be done to determine if the turn lane is warranted. So we read the first part, but we didn't read the second. So we'd have to, it, and it says, as you may have noticed, there was a turn lane at Cosmon Road. There will likely be a similar through traffic at Klondike Road. Trying to get to a traffic, and here, here's the safety factor, and you're having kids at your property, and that scares me, too, because if they're driving, and maybe they're too young, and maybe some aren't, and you have to stop and you have to go to that property and turn, that scares me. Then your road's not gonna be big enough to go into it. Which, remember, I said if I had to improve the road, I'd have to do the whole road. If I was doing a commercial property, if I did it anywhere else, if it was commercial, I'd have to do the whole road, all the way in. Then you have some water there and some other issues you have going on. I think what you're doing is amazing, so, and I think your neighbors think what, you're doing such nice stuff, but you're doing it commercially. And they're not trying to make it personal on you, and it's, it gets that way because it's a commercial business intruding in on a neighborhood. So, for me, it's, and, and I believe it's just gonna keep getting bigger. And I think the spot you picked is, is gonna cause you issues forever. So, I feel bad for you, but I, I can't, with all the, the safety factors and the things that are happening, um, for me, I, I can't see moving forward, so.
Thank you, too. I, for the people out there, it's the reason I, like I said, this has been on our agenda and on our radar for quite a bit. In fact, we had a couple commissioners go up and look at the property over the weekend and so forth. Um, the reason why I'm asking for, uh, a motion on the floor before we move forward, before we have public comment, is because I think that gives you an idea of what to talk about.
Mr. Chair.
So, that's what I'm, I'm gonna lead towards that, and then go to public comment and go to three minutes. At any time, if a motion, a motion can always be changed, and a substitute motion could be put up at any time. So after a public comment, if one of the commissioners multiply, multiple, change their mind, they can do a substitute motion. That's, that's, I just wanted to clarify that for you, you folks out in the audience. Mr. Ross Kneck?
As I was on the planning commission on this, uh, particular subject, I'm gonna go ahead and move to approve the planning commission's recommendation, which was to move to deny without prejudice, major plan unit development overlay amendment, PE twenty-three dash oh-two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the planning commission's recommendations of, uh, to deny without prejudice. And that means that they can come back, Cody, with that motion, they, they can come back?
Uh, Coach, second amendment, yeah, they could come back within a year, um, and apply, and redo their application. They would just have to pay advertising fees.
Okay, I just want, I just wanted to clarify that for everybody before we go, Ms. Hickok?
And just to clarify, why I'm saying that is maybe we can find some kind of solution where you could still have what you're doing, but not grow it so big that the neighbors can have some kind of compromise with you. Because, like I said, what they're doing, neighbors, is really good for what they're doing. They're doing some really good things for our community. But for them to grow it to the part where the neighbors are going, okay, this is too commercial, so deny without prejudice would say work it out. Work out something that would work with both of you, so it wouldn't be so uneasy for both sides to be able, for your understanding, for such a good, th- these kids are trying to do something good for our community. So try to do something to try to help them, so both sides can work something out. That's what deny without prejudice for me means. It doesn't mean to try to be despiteful toward you guys.
So Katie and Brett, this is how we're gonna go through public comment. We got about ten folks, and I don't know if they're all for or against, I don't know. But you are the applicant, so I am giving you as the applicant the opportunity to, to either speak at the beginning or the end.
The end.
Okay, we'll do that then. So I will start off with a public comment, and I'll remind everybody, you know what the motion is on the floor, and you've heard the discussion, so we're gonna limit it to three minutes, if we could. So with that, I'll call the first person up, which is Zach Haig. I've seen it spelt different than that before, so it's, uh...
Uh, Zach Haig, neighbor, um, resident of Klondike Road. Sorry, I took twelve hours of vacation today. I have one page, I won't read it all, but...
You got three minutes, you can get her done.
Okay, well, I can't get it done in three minutes, that's why I said I don't think that's fair. Here's the picture that stands above my table. This was taken before we, before Katie and Brett came into our neighborhood. You could see why, why we'd want to live here. That's what the road looked, it was like, it was in pristine condition, um, before, before they came into our lives. Um, it changed, the, the road has changed the, the nature of the neighborhood. What they're asking to do is change, changing the nature of the neighborhood. I, I'm not speaking for any of the other neighbors, I'm gonna speak to what you guys just said. Um, for me, it's not been about the music, it's been about the bed and breakfast. Now, I came, I'm, I'm against all of it, because it was either all or none, that's how I looked at it. But if you want to find common ground, that's my common ground. Um, I do believe what, uh, Commissioner Hickok said. I've read the regulations, I'm a retired army officer. I've sat in the seat like you guys sit right now and made hard decisions, and you go to the regulations, and your regulations say in, uh, that, that it defines in section two eleven what a commercial property is. And I'm gonna read that, recreational facility, group home, hotel, motel, studio, vocational school, and last but not least, home rental. So what's the point of having regulations if you're not gonna follow your own regulations? Next thing on the road, y- thank you guys for, uh, responding to my email, but it did undercut the house that I just built. I'm not an engineer, um, but I can tell you that, that, that's gonna fall away in the next couple of weeks if we get some rain, um, and it's gonna erode back into my property, far past the easement. I think that should be pretty obvious to, to anybody sitting up here, or anybody who took the time to go out to the road. It's hard to grow, grow grass and re-vegetate something on verti- on a vertical plane. Um, so, you know, maybe that's my three minutes, I have a little bit more to say, but I might raise my hand again later. Any questions for me?
No questions, Zach. And, and for the audience, if, if you got a group of you and you want to give your time to one other person, you can do that.
Say that again, sir.
If you want to give, if, we got three-speaker requests, you know, if you got three speakers in a group, you can give all your time to another person.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that I did drive to Klondike yesterday, drove down past the excavator and, and, uh, at the, at the request of one of the landowners, just, uh, so that I could personally witness, uh, what's going on in that area.
I guess one of the things that the, the group is, is, would like on public record, uh, if possible, is that, um, the, the, the ground is undisturbed, and that, uh, final stabilization, stabilization is, is up to, um, the neighbors, but also that, that weed control, um, that's gonna, that's gonna pop with all kinds of Canadian thistle for the next couple of years.
See, my concern was if we had a major rain event right now, I don't even want to guess what that pond's gonna look like down there. I mean, that's reality.
Oh, yeah, and then we're, and we're gonna get that in the next two days, then it's gonna melt off, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Could you just ask, ask a clarification? You quoted, uh, two eleven in our commercial, that's our commercial district, but you said that. Um, what was your definition for that?
Are you talking to me, sir?
Yes.
I, I didn't, I didn't read off of a defin- definition. I read, there's a list of things that are, um, under that, under the, get, guise, I guess, of, um, commercial property. That's recreational facilities, group homes, hotels, motels, studios, vocational schools, and the last one listed is a vacation home rental. You know, if, if you look at how far we've come, and you look at what's being asked, initially, it was like, hey, this is the exact same thing, or not exact, this is very similar to a, um, daycare. That's what, that's what they called it when they started this. Did the, does anybody look at the PUD today and say this is a daycare? I mean, I've never understood that. The reason they said that is because daycare is allowed under, uh, agglan. Some kids are allowed, I think.
Any more follow-up questions, Mr. Laster?
Nothing.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you, sir.
Next on my agenda is Jacqueline Bacon, Baker?
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Baker, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Rushmore Music Festival. As stated in the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan, one of your responsibilities is, and I quote, quote, "Recruiting new businesses, expanding existing businesses, or assisting in startup businesses." When attracting businesses to the county, it is important that a wide range of industries are considered to provide for a well-rounded economy that is not solely reliant on a single industry. In EDU dash one point four, it is fur- it further states that, quote, "The county should encourage development of businesses and industries orientated towards differing segments of the marketplace," unquote. Pennington County currently offers limited resources for classical music training for young people. Rushmore Music Festival provides that opportunity for its residents as well as young musicians from around the world. Putting Rapid City on the map as one of the leaders in academies for classical music for advanced students in the United States. Year-round concerts also serve to enrich and educate the community at large. In section four point one of the Comprehensive Plan, tourism is noted as one of the key, five key economic drivers for Pennington County. Quoted on page four dash three, "It will be important for the county to leverage its tourism assets in the coming years to continue to grow the tourism industry within Pennington County." With twenty students and their families, as well as eight faculty members participating at the festival, Rushmore Music Festival plays a role in that drive to promote tourism in the Black Hills. I hope that you will consider these remarks, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Next we have Candace Burns. You'll, you'll pass Candace? Next I have Amy Zog, okay. I'm always cautious, 'cause my name gets slotted, too, so.
That's fine.
Thanks, Amy.
I'll be brief, um, my name is Amy Zog, I live out on Klondike Road. Um, the burdens that this business has already created were an increase in traffic, increased trespassing and wanderers, and this is a residential area on a private road that business does not fit. Um, and we're still not certain how staff feels that at completion, a nine thousand square foot home, ten cabins, and a parking lot resemble and flow any of the other residences in this area. Um, some of my stuff is irrelevant now, so. Um, of the landowners that live on Klondike Road, all of us have opposed this business from the beginning. Um, and there's even more opposition from landowners that plan to live out there in the future, build their homes in the future. Um, we've been to every meeting, written letters, and talked at length with the commissioners. Um, and we just couldn't understand with this much opposition while we're still fighting this. So, um, quite a while ago, I don't know exactly how long, um, we hired an attorney as residents opposing this, and our attorney sent a compromise to their attorney saying, um, that if they wanted to do their music camp, find no bed and breakfast, and they rejected that. So, we did put something forward, and, um, I guess that's all I have. Um, we just ask you don't approve this extension.
Thank you, Amy. Next I have Judy Rody.
Good morning, Judy Rody. Um, we all appreciated that every single board member last week voted that enough is enough. Um, our side did not get anything we were wanting to keep, um, to, to keep this business out of our small neighborhood, um, but they did. They got what, a lot of what they were asking for already. Now we all have to live with those consequences. Um, we are all hoping this can come to an end and nothing more will be allowed. Planning denied this at least twice after going over it extensively, and I think this is the eighth or ninth meeting that we've been here. One thing that is super important to me is the traffic, because we pull an almost forty-foot fifth-wheel trailer up there, buy a double cab, long box pickup, and every time we pull onto Highway sixteen or come off of Highway sixteen, we hold our breath. We watch as far as we... We watch as far as we can and then say, go, we, we've got a second. But that doesn't mean that with more traffic, there's gonna be an accident there, I can guarantee it, and it's gonna be more than one. Um, that, the 18-foot road doesn't even play into that, that, that Highway 16 is going to be dangerous and there's gonna be issues. Um, the landowners shouldn't have to make more compromise to support the lifestyle that they want to live. Please remember, you're gonna hear a, a lot of heartfelt, uh, information about how we're trying to quiet the music, and we are not. This is only about a business going into a residential area. If they chose, like Doug Zog said last time, the property right on 16, none of us would have even said anything, but they chose to put it in our neighborhood. That's where the difference is. Um, please don't allow more cabins. Um, no more people, no more traffic, no more expansion, and hopefully, no more meetings.
Thanks, Judy, and you did very well, two minutes. Everybody's been doing a good job. Um, next I, I don't have a full response on this one, Anna? Anna, okay. I even pronounced that wrong, didn't I?
That's all right, I'm Ania Carley, just a private citizen concerned. Um, I'm here in support of the Rushmore Music Festival and what they're trying to do. Uh, I know that there are a lot of, um, neighbors who are against this, and I understand that as well, I know that, um, none of us as people living in residential areas like to see the city coming toward us, but unfortunately, we live in a world where things are expanding, people come, city comes, and places that were nice and rural eventually become more crowded, more people, more traffic. This is the way of progress, this is not stoppable. And I feel like, um, it's actually not our job to just stop what people want to do in their area. This is bringing people, enterprise, life to the area, and I understand that they, they don't like it. They should have done a H O A or some covenants, because they did not, what is happening here is legal and should be allowed, they, it feels like sour grapes when somebody comes in to do something perfectly legal on their property and people complain because they don't like it. That is, if there is a motivation to keep an area the way that it wa- it is and not to change it at all, then that needs to be put in place before somebody comes and does something that they have not been told is not allowed. They have, the Brett and Katie have done everything to do this the right way, they have come in, they have talked to the city, they have talked to the commissioners, they've talked to the planning center, they've gotten, um, one thing after another, they've done everything that they've been told to do, they've gone through these, what, 27 conditions or whatever it is, and they've been going through each of those and, and trying to make do on every single one. They're trying to follow the path and do what they've been recommended to from the very beginning, and, um, I'd like to know when the planning center, uh, planning commission then decides not to do it, what legal basis there is for this, because it seems like, uh, it's, it's finding excuses now. It seems like we're beyond, like, uh, you know, there's no legal basis for this, I'm just trying to find an excuse to say no. And some of the things that, um, I'm, I'm thinking about is when they're trying to expand to 20 people, we're not talking 20 people who are coming and going every day. This is, we talked about this last time, I think, where it's like a birthday party, so they come drop off 20 kids, but instead of picking them up, you know, three hours later from the party, they pick them up two weeks later, I'm sorry.
30 seconds.
Yes, they pick them up two weeks later, so it's, it's not a, traffic is coming every day for, you know, the entire summer, it's come drop off, come pick up. In a lot of cases, it's one group that's taking them all in there, it's not like we're adding traffic of all these people. So, I just wanted to clarify that, also, um, changing the neighbor, the, uh, the nature of the neighborhood, that does happen. Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker request form comes from Darla Drew.
Hello, everyone, I, I can't believe I'm back here on this. Um, listening to the comments this morning and, um, uh, knowing what the project is like, all I can say to Katie and Brett is, why do you want to stay there? Your project is worth, your house, your, your area is worth a lot of money, and there are great groups that probably want to buy that land and all the stuff that goes with it. Why don't you go somewhere and start over? I go with the BMW group or, you know, motorcycles would be a good place to stay there. Um, maybe a cult type of church would buy your land and like to stay there. We don't really want you there is what I hear, that's what I hear, we don't want you there, so maybe they should just find another place to take their million dollars and go build something.
Are you talking to us or are you talking to the others?
I'm talking to all of you.
Okay, sit down, thank you. You need to sit down, because that's not, we follow the rules and regs, Darla, I'm sorry that doesn't please you, but you need to sit down.
Um, no, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll just change it to something else that may make you happy.
Because we're trying to follow the rules and regs. This is a, this is a major plan unit development. Okay? This is a major plan unit development, ma'am. Okay, let's follow the rules and regs by that, I'm sorry, that's what you think, that's your personal opinion.
That is my personal opinion, I thought I could give that here. Um, so, um, also with the egress and, um, those kinds of things, I noticed you didn't talk much about that with the other areas that you were, um, going through this morning when you were talking about, um, bed and breakfast, that we didn't talk about much about, um, if that was a problem. And I thought I'd hear a little bit more about that this morning, when you talk about these guys, it's, it's obviously a big problem. I might recommend that you slow down a bit when you come into that area, if this is gonna go on. Um, and, uh, maybe what's the fine for illegal con- concerts? I don't, I've never seen one, so they ha- they might have concerts out there, you might want to consider what that would be, and I'm talking to you here. Is there a fine for illegal concerts, they have more than one? And the other thing I would say is if the, uh, neighbors are that interested in protecting everything, we did this when we were on council, I was on council, just buy the land, protect yourself, thank you.
Thank you, Darla. Okay, folks, we, we're down to the last two, and what I'm gonna do respectfully ask is we, we keep it respectful, and we've been doing that so far, so, uh, next person up is Sharon. Oh, Sharon, I ain't got a bell to pronounce that. Is it Papinu? Oh, I didn't put my glasses on, there we go. Okay, Sharon.
Hi, I'm Sharon Papinu, and I'm going to give you a little background of my life for a specific reason. I grew up on a small farm in North Dakota, and I'm grateful for my heritage. I taught in North Dakota and California for 47 years. And during my, uh, career, I had the privilege of training college students for teaching, I enjoyed that part of my career. If I would have had Brett or Katie as one of my students training for teaching, I would have been elated and thrilled. I've known Brett and Katie since they moved to Rapid City, excuse me. It has been a pleasure. With my background, I know without a doubt Brett and Katie are an amazing couple, whatever they do is a, a success. They are hardworking, professional, and responsible. I'm very grateful for Brett and Katie as they have so blessed my life. Their music of string instruments are, is unbelievable and professional. I encourage you to attend one of their concerts, the last concert was held at the Dolls Art Center. Please allow this couple to continually be a part of this community. Brett and Katie deserve utmost support in any area they pursue. And I do have an email, may I read that, from another individual?
You've got approximately a minute and a half.
Okay, this is from Russ Widener, he is a retired professor from Wichita State, uh, Kansas. Uh, Sharon, this is an email in support of the musicians who are offering such a wonderful service to Rapid City in South Dakota, other cities anywhere in this country would be excited to not only have musicians such as these, but would give them support to them. The selfishness and lack of human kindness towards these people being demonstrated by their neighbors in the county are mind-boggling to me. We should be thanking them and doing everything we could to help them establish the kind of art they are trying to bring to this community. I wish I could be at this meeting, uh, in person, but I'm having eye surgery that has been scheduled for advance. Please give my utmost support and encouragement to this committee and the wonderful musicians. Sincerely, Russ Widener, retired director of the School of Music, Wichita State University, and now resident of Rapid City since 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next we have Bill Evans.
Hi, Bill Evans, Alderman Ward 2 for Rapid City, you're sitting in my area, uh, welcome to my ward. Um, I would like the homeowners out there, uh, to maybe do a paradigm shift. I grew up, I was born in Kalispell, Montana. I've seen what's happened to the Kalispell Whitefish Valley. My cousin Julie, after 45 years of having to sell, of running a resort there, had to sell it because she couldn't afford to pay the taxes. A lot of my cousins still reside in Bozeman, Missoula, we still have land in Belt, Lewistown, Monarch. We see what happens when the wrong people come in and buy the land and force out the way of life that these people are trying to protect. And I unders- totally understand that, that's the reason I moved back to Rapid City after college. I love this town, I want it to stay the same, but the reality is, you only need to go out to the airport and look at the jet spark there to see, change is coming. I would like it to be appropriate community that preserves our way of life as much as possible. To me, this is an ideal neighbor. There are other people that may not be such, and I'm worried that, you know, in this town, there are people with the resources to pay them a healthy profit for their land and have the wrong people move into that particular swath of land. And then your lifestyle is completely altered, and I don't think the county or the city or anybody else around here has the resources to fight some of these forces. So I'm asking you guys to get in your car, visit, uh, Bozeman, see what's happening up there, see the change that happens when unlimited money is introduced into the formula, because that's really, I think, what we're, we're gonna end up fighting here, you know the changes coming to Rapid City, I would like it to be minimal, I'd like it to be positive. To me, they are an ideal tenant, um, far better than virtually any other kind of, uh, tenant you might find for that property. So I'm asking the residents to rethink this, do a paradigm shift as what could be, um, and find that maybe this is one of the better options that's out there, so thank you.
Thank you, Bill, that completes our speaker request forms. You, you can come up, which you've got three minutes, just, uh, give us your name and.
My name is Jessica Paul, I am a student myself of Dr. Smirnova and Mr. Wolfish, as is my nine-year-old son. To have neighbors come up here and give false information that we trespass onto their property is complete hogwash. It's pretty clear that you stay on the road, and you know where their house is, and you go up the driveway. And we have our lesson one time a week for an hour and a half now, because I also take violin lessons to support my son, and then we come out the road and go home once a week. So to insinuate that there's people wandering, driving where they shouldn't, is complete nonsense. Change is coming, I work at Black Hills Federal Credit Union, our CEO Jerry Schmidt says, folks, he talks to our executive leadership team once a week and says, you won't recognize this place in 10 years. The financial landscape is changing. If we want to grow and encourage intellectual curiosity, innovation, um, community building, keeping dollars in our community, we want to foster, um, the citizens that inhabit our community and encourage participation in events such as these. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, folks, I'm gonna make one comment because I may have to leave in between the decision on this, because I have a, uh, important dentist appointment, but my comment is, is you've all been heard today, both sides, I'm, I'm gonna let you guys finish, but the commission had their discussions at, at the beginning of this, voiced their concerns, you got to hear their concerns. My concerns on this is I support the motion on the floor for the simple fact that the road is not finished yet, and there's some concerns with that, and I probably need to have some more review, that's my personal one, where I'm at. But with that, I wanted to express that, but with that, I'll turn it over to Katie and Brett, you have the floor. There are the applicants.
Good morning, I hope it's still as sunny as it is outside right now when we're done with this. So, before I get started, I am just a little bit confused because I know that there's been a lot of, um, support from both sides, um, for the Rushmore Music Festival's use and then also Airbnb, so I'm just trying to clarify, what are, the motion that's on the floor, isn't it for the, uh, use of additional six sheds for, um, music classes? And then to increase from six to 20 guests, and then to have a potential winter camp, is that?
This would be my recommendation, Katie, is that, there's multiple things, because after the planning commission, you guys made some concessions and changed some things, and so these people of the audience didn't get to hear that, and neither do he- these guys. But the motion on the floor is to deny, uh, without prejudice, which means that gives you time to go out and visit and come back with a, a more firm plan after what you've heard today also, not only just the planning commission, but what, what you've heard today, if that motion passes.
May I seek a point of clarity on that, which is, should it get denied without prejudice today? Um, under what legal basis would that be taking place in the ordinance?
It's the decision of the, of the body, to deny without prejudice, which is, which, what we look at as a board, that gives you more time, we're not saying we're denying it completely. It means you could put it back on the agenda next mu- next month, and then they could actually see some of these changes a little bit more earlier and give you more discussions. If you don't want to make any concessions, uh, you can put it back on the agenda the next commission meeting. Am I correct with that? I don't want to be misleading anybody.
Uh, Cody Sacramento, so if it's denied without prejudice, they can come back with the same application with the same request, uh, so they can request the additional concerts, they can request all of that, um, or they can come back with a watered-down version of what they're requesting.
Mr. Chair, point of clarity. Deny without prejudice versus denial, I know we're in the deny without prejudice, but that needs to be clear.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's just denied, they'd have to wait one year.
One year, yeah.
To, to sure they can apply for it again.
Okay, hold on.
And then deny without prejudice means they could come back in two weeks, or whatever the, the, uh, requirements are meant for notification.
Yeah, they, they could, uh, um, theoretically apply for it right after the meeting and go back on the agenda, they just have to get on the board agenda.
Just want the public to be aware of the differences.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, we, the planning commission could have just denied, and this had been in a bit for one year. And I think being a commissioner, the tough thing about being a commissioner is you try to find common ground with each side. Sooner or later, you gotta make a decision, and it's not easy at all, I can guarantee you that, we're, I think the music venue's absolutely wonderful, I just don't know if it's in the right location, but, uh, just realize that it's really tough being a commissioner and trying to make a decision that, uh, you can please everybody, and obviously, you can't do that all the time.
Of course, and we totally respect the position you're in, it's not an easy one. Um, in terms of the music venue, we took that part off the table, we went back to the original P U D of before. We, we are not asking for any more events, um, as, as part of this amendment. So I just wanted to be clear that, so the only thing that we're asking for is when we have our camp there this summer, because we will have the residence completely built, uh, by then to house our students, they need a place to practice. And those practice sheds, as we've spelled out countlessly in previous meetings, provide them with that space to do that. And then we're asking for the 20 people in the bed and breakfast, which we actually have a list of all the permits that have been pulled for those, uh, V H R, bed and breakfast, and specialty resorts, in the last two years, you've heard 27 and issued 25. The two that you result, that you, that were not granted were, you know, based on. The two that you result, that were not granted were, you know, based on staff recommendations due to septic on-site wastewater, things like that, that were completely unsafe even according to staff's recommendations. Whereas ours has been approved by the staff time and time and time again. Cody said we could reapply, you know, today. Our neighbors don't want to come back here. We don't want to come back here. You're sick of seeing us. So I just wanted to make it clear that we just want to be treated fairly based on the ordinances and precedents that have been already set by this commission.
I think, the reason why I kind of said what I said is because of what the recent roadwork is being done on there. From the very beginning when this came forward and the reason why, from my memory, why the commission went ahead and gave you the six and gave you some other amendments was because they wanted to wait and see how that road gets finished and worked out before things were started. That, that's what I remember and that was probably what I believed in back then. And since then, it's a work in progress. And plus, there's some other, now there's some other variables that have been brought up again. That's why I decided we get a motion on the floor first, so you know what to work with.
Chairman. So it was said, we're just trying to shut things down. Nobody likes it just because we don't like it. So we had a VHR come in, we had the neighbors and everybody say, you just don't like it. Well, they had to improve the road. They didn't have to prove it on just their property. In order to do a split lot, they had to improve all the section line. They had to improve all the road. They didn't have to do that. You just had to do your property. Am I right?
So may I ask Cody, oh, Cody Love? It was actually a directive by the fire administrator.
Because you guys are major plan unit development. You're not commercial. You're not a VHR. You're not just a VHR. You're not splitting lines. So we play by the rules of major plan unit development. So you're doing the roads and you're still doing the road. That's not done yet. So we're not making the decision because you haven't had that done yet. That's what Lloyd's telling you. Your VHR, we haven't done the rules and regs. We're not done with the rules and regs of VHRs. So you guys are telling us that because everybody else got it done, you guys aren't everybody else. We don't have that many major plan unit developments in Pennington County. And we do look at the neighbors on VHRs. We do look at the neighbors on other people, not just you guys. So because nobody else likes it, one of your people had said, that's not what it's about. You have to play by the rules and regs of everybody.
We're just wondering which ones we violated or have broken trust with.
No. What it is, is not finishing. What you said you were going to do in the first place before you come ask for more.
We're almost eighty thousand into construction and it's literally ongoing and it will be done once the weather is complete.
And it's not done yet, right?
It's been out of our control.
You still have sloughing, you still have stuff coming off the road. So you have a deny without prejudice to move forward and get your stuff done and then come back, let us see the road, let us see what's happening, let the neighbors see that you followed through, remember, because that's, that was my major thing. You said you were going to do one thing, but you did something else. You said you did something on the road that you did three cutouts and you said they were safe, but they weren't safe. So the bottom line is, you're doing a road, you have cutouts, those roads are still cut out, the road is still not done. And that's why I said deny without prejudice. Finish your road, finish what you said, make it safe for your people. Because if those roads slough off and they're coming off those cars, that is not safe. That is not safe. So finish those things, then come back and ask for this from this board and probably that planning commission, show that you followed through on that road. It looks nice and it's safe, not only for your people, for the people using that road, you might get a whole different ballgame. That's, that's my point of view. I don't just deny people because I have nothing else to do and I just listen to neighbors because you can ask, because there was neighbors on that case and I voted for the VHR. So bottom line is, we're fair to everybody. Road, I just said again, Lloyd made a good decision. The road's not done. I would deny without prejudice until you follow through, but I told you that from the beginning. And then your last decision, I voted for you because you did follow through with everything you said before.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, hold on here. Can you make it quick? Because I really have to give the applicants an opportunity to speak.
Yes, it was just going to be a quick. While I may agree with some of the stuff that Commissioner Hancock said there, I would be more inclined to continue it and to give you time to do it rather than deny without prejudice, because I do think we need to get everything settled like Commissioner Hancock is saying. But I'm more of the route of, of, of not denying it, but of continuing it to give you time to do that, just to put quite a clarification out there.
Okay.
May I speak?
Yes, please.
No, I think there was just a miscommunication. We were under impression, I guess Cody, maybe you can speak to this. We're not planning to operate anything without a final review from the planning and zoning staff. We've just had this meeting on the books and we just, because of the weather, we didn't get to finish everything, but it's mid-construction. We're not saying that we're done and, you know, please give us everything we want. We just didn't, I guess Cody, could you maybe clarify? I guess maybe we misunderstood and otherwise we would have continued it.
I think you're exactly right. You're following the timeline that was given to you back in June. That's why you're here and so forth. Okay, so now Cody, now with hearing that and what Mr. Lester had said, instead of denying without prejudice, maybe a continuance might be a more proper motion. What's your thoughts?
So Cody Sacramento, so a deny without prejudice and a continuance are pretty similar. The only difference is, is we actually, when you continue it, we'll have a meeting date, so it won't be read advertised because anybody from the public who's here will know that meeting date because they were at this meeting. The deny without prejudice is usually for if there's like a big, a big item that can't be worked out in a short amount of time and we don't know when it'll get done. It could be a year from now, it could be two years from now. So that's when you, or I shouldn't say year, like six months from now it could be done and we don't know the meeting date, that's why you re-advertise it. If it's something that the board thinks could be hashed out within like a month or so, you could continue it for a month, month and a half.
Well, here's my thoughts. Thanks for that clarification, is your previous item was approved, which is the original. So I think the motion on the floor is probably a good one at this point in time to deny without prejudice, meaning that you can come back, doesn't have to be, you're not given next meeting, but the following one, but notices will still be given out. So I think it is a good, proper motion for what some of the concerns I've heard from the commissions as an option.
Could we request a continuance as applicants?
You could.
I would, I would like to get my three minutes if you're still willing to give me that, but I guess, yeah, we would like, since the road is the issue of, you know, and finishing it, we would like to request a continuance.
What I would suggest is, we'd still give you three minutes. And if you want a continuance, I think I know where you're going. I would probably give at least a two-month continuance.
Maybe early April, if that's possible.
Second meeting in April?
Or first meeting in April? I don't know which date it falls on.
You've got a lot of residents here, so they need it, they want some dates and times.
April fourth is the first.
That's what I was actually thinking. I was thinking about making a substitute motion for that.
Okay, so we'll give you three minutes. I have to leave, I'm sorry. If you want to make that motion.
I'd like to make the substitute motion that we continue this item until the first meeting in April, first Board of Commission, the second, I'm sorry, the second Board of Commission meeting in April, which is April...
Eighteenth.
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 Mr. Chair.
Is there a second first for a continuance? Okay, it's been, motion's been made and seconded to continue to the April second?
April eighteenth.
Eighteenth meeting, sorry. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, all in favor, oh, you want, I'm sorry.
The only thing I'm saying is that we're really putting the neighbors out. I think they're tired of coming to these meetings. They just want to see this resolved and just continuing it and continuing it and continuing it one way or another. I just want to put this thing to bed. And I really feel you're encroaching on your neighbors' rights. And that's where I have the heartburn here.
I agree with you and I believe the continuance has us coming to one meeting instead of two the next time around.
Yeah, okay. So the motion on the floor is to continue. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. You have your three minutes.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say...
I have to turn the meeting over to Mr. Oscar.
I just wanted to say that my husband and I have been very forthcoming about our plans. Even well before we purchased the land, we did meet with the planning and zoning staff. So we were not aware that even a narrow road would impede on our ability to have a short-term rental of any sort. But that said, we've worked with the staff every step of the way. We've received their approval at every stage for what we're asking. Ever since we found out about the road, we have taken active steps in making it a safer community for everyone. We've been in compliance with the zoning ordinances. The previous request that we had, we passed with flying colors. We've had no complaints and we've complied with everything that the zoning staff has asked of us. And like my husband said, we did invest almost eighty thousand dollars into the road improvement. I just wanted to finish on saying that before we submitted the original request, we didn't live there, we had no idea what it was like and now we have. And I just want to mention a couple of things that has happened to us since living there. The survey and the engineering plans that we paid about twenty thousand dollars for, for KLJ, our neighbors have actually stolen and taken out the survey stakes. There are four of them at the beginning of that creek, so those, we have filed a police report with the sheriff. They've also posted signs with no access and no trespassing, and that was on Forest Service land. And they actually used a Forest Service sign that they defaced and vandalized to post those signs. So we're working with a special agent right now because we can't get mail to our house because it says no access and no trespassing on Forest Service land. And they've stopped our students, they've stopped us, they've blocked the road, they nearly made one of our students drive off a cliff. They've put a camera to monitor every single person who goes up and down that road. This has been taken down ever since we filed a report with the US Forest Service. And the last thing is, there's three of them that regularly RV and camp on their lots where they don't have homes. And I believe that not a single one of them has a conditional use permit for that. So all I want to say is, I feel like we have followed all of the requests that have been made of us and we're not, you know, not law-abiding citizens. I feel like we've done everything, so, and I can't say the same thing for those living around us.
Katie, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
How long have you owned that land?
We closed, I believe, in June of 2020.
How many years?
Couple of years.
Going on three.
So before you bought the land, did you kind of have these plans already before you bought it?
Define plans? We had ideas for...
Were you going to build a single-family home? Were you going to build a single-family home with ten cabins and have concerts? I mean, that was kind of the grand scheme of things?
Well, we needed a home for what we wanted to do and we knew that our own home would be the ideal place to do that in a beautiful location. We always wanted to make it a single-family residence for ourselves. And, you know, naturally is, you know, you get an idea and you start to put ideas of that idea out and you start to influence and shape that idea in a very natural and holistic way as you better understand what exactly you want.
So what I'm thinking is that you, you know, you had an idea, you know, what you wanted to do and that you did all the proper procedures, you went and got the permits and all that, but where did the neighbors get involved with this? I just think this thing was way too far developed when the neighbors found out about it. And it's my understanding that before you purchased your land, that the neighbors bought into a neighborhood that they felt quiet, a little trail, and that's what they bought into. And obviously, this whole thing is changing. And I, and that's the concern that I have are, what are we doing to the neighbor? I think what you're doing is grand, or it's absolutely wonderful, the music venue and all of them. I'm just wondering if it was the right location in the beginning.
Respectfully, we looked at, you know, when we've said this and it's been said many times, you know, we looked, is there an HOA? Is there a covenant? What kind of zoning is it on? And I, no HOA, no covenants, you know, they had the opportunity to buy it, they passed. I would, you know, refer to the comment made earlier that if they really wanted it, they should have purchased it themselves, but, and the people that we bought it from, we did tell them what we were planning on doing with it and they said, here's a great price for it. We said, thank you so much. What else could we do?
Well, the motion's been made to continue, which we'll do until the second meeting in April.
Speaking, they're still speaking. They're three minutes.
Go ahead.
They're done, time's up.
Yep. But with that being said, I, you know, I don't think our vote's good, you know, when we vote, I don't think it's, we're going to take into consideration what the neighbors do and what you do. We just can't do that. We just have to sit there and try to look at the facts and property rights. I always try to look at property rights and I try to look at both sides.
Just for myself, would you, and I hear the term "commercial" from everyone a lot. Would anyone be willing to explain to me for which part of what we're doing, are you calling "commercial" in relation to this amendment? I guess I'm just not understanding.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Unless Commissioner Hancock wants to say something first, but I did take note what the gentleman said, Zach, I believe, whenever you're talking about two eleven. Whenever you look at those, you got to realize what that is. That was actually the commercial and what you can do in a commercial zoning area. We have zoning in the county. They're actually applying for a PUD, which is under, what section is that? Two sixteen for a specialty resort, which also allows for a VHR. So you've got to understand when you say, well, "commercial" is VHR. Well, yes, but so is PUD underneath PUD. So you can have it in multiple different areas. So what you were looking at, even though you want to define it as "commercial," that's just a particular zoning that says it's "commercial." Now, Commissioner Hancock and I might agree that business ventures are "commercial," depending on what they are and where they're at, but there's also no definition legally that VHRs are considered a commercial business, if I'm correct. And we've had that conversation with our legal team. We can, we can sit there and we may agree that they are "commercial" because it might be for profit, it could be, it is a business and things of that nature, but it doesn't mean that it's defined that way particularly. And the public looks at it different and we may still look at it differently. However, we still have to go with what our ordinance says. And our ordinance says in a PUD, vacation home rental is allowed. So I'm leaning in the aspect of, you're following the ordinance, that's where I'm at. I would also caution us to say that home music lessons are not acceptable in the county. I can tell you, because my kids, and I've said this before, my kids do music lessons, guitar, violin, fiddle, piano. And I can tell you, there's many individuals in town and in the county that have a education music lessons in their home. And if we're going to say that we're going to stop that in someone's home, we're going to have a problem because there's a lot of them in the county. And I don't think we realize how many there are in the county, but there are many of them. And they operate, some of them five days a week, eight and ten students. They just kind of churn in and churn out. And I'm nearly one of those pieces of property, so I see them all day long, even in the weekends. So while that may technically be what we would call "commercial" because it's a business making money, we don't see it, we don't look at it that way. We're not, we're not micromanaging what somebody does in their, on their piece of property. And we shouldn't. That's not what the county is supposed to do. That's my take, I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, for me, and that's what I said earlier, when you, when you have a business or you have a property, it's a little bit different when you have the, the traffic is bigger, the roads are used more, the number of people you have, the parking you have. I was a city councilperson before I was a county commissioner. So if you did that in the city, it would be called "commercial," or you could have "neighborhood commercial." But then we're in the county now. So then we call it a PUD and that's why I said, planning unit development, but you are a major plan unit development. So you just call it something else so we can make sure people are being able to do these kinds of things. And then we just don't put "commercial" on it because it's called a PUD. So it allows you to do some of these things, which I understand. But you have to be respectful in doing some of these things, just like I would in the city, in a neighborhood. So that's what we're saying to you. It's stop that, you get your land and you get to do whatever, because you can't do that in the city either, because you have rules and regulations. So what you're doing, I think the music festival is a good thing. But when you grow it so big and if it grows to something that is, and it looks majorly "commercial" in the parking and the, and the lighting and the noise and the roads are being affected for the neighbors in the neighborhood, I don't care if it's city or county, you call it a PUD, you can call it "commercial," you can call it "neighborhood commercial." I never liked land designations in the first place because they don't seem to fit. Or legally, it depends on the person who owns it.
May I ask, so you're talking about the festival that is the summer camp?
Not just the festival, what, how you're affecting in the neighborhood. By what you, what you are doing in that neighborhood. You have to be respectful. By, by what you, what you are doing in that neighborhood, you have to be respectful for what's happening in the neighborhood. So you have people living around you, and so you have traffic, how much traffic would you like to be affected by on your land or your property that you're around? Whether it's my neighbor next door, whether it's my neighbor ten acres, whether it's my neighbor fifty acres, be respectful of what that property and that road, if that road is for twenty property owners and not just you to get in that property, you're affecting it by how many people you are putting on their road. You're affecting how much lighting you're putting up there, you're affecting how much, uh, parking you're putting up there, depending on how the parking is sloughing and what you're doing up there, or how you're undercutting stuff, or how you're doing anything. That's why I told you before, if you're being respectful, it's very hard for people to come after you.
So.
But if you're not, I'm not trying to be mean to you, um, I've just learned this, and I deal with a lot of ag and farmers that are on there and heck. And they seem to end up in the long run, there has to be some kind of respect. If your neighbor's doing stuff to you, um, I've seen it for years, I don't care if it's in the same, same year as the county, um, I don't know why neighbors have to be so mean to each other, it doesn't matter who you are, it just, it's not just you guys. So don't take it personally, um, that's just what they do, I don't know why. But main thing is, um, try to run it so it's respectful, that when you have the traffic and you have the things, they're not gonna be affected in a way that it looks commercial. Because that's what's gonna make them mad, and, and it would you.
Sure, I completely understand, so that's why we, um, I mean, we, we both agreed that we can take off all the concerts. So when we have our music festival, which was already.
I don't know if it's the concerts, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I don't know if it's concerts.
Wha- what is it?
I don't, I don't know what it is at this point, I haven't been up there and seen, um, all your stuff. All I saw was when you were doing the road and you were telling me one thing and doing another, back in the day, um, with the road, and then you said, we didn't do that, and it was undercut, when your hill had the sloughing and all the rain was coming off of it, I went up and looked, it was, uh, was affecting the other neighbors. Um, when you undercut your hill, and it comes off, and it was affecting the top of the hill, all that is, is disrespecting the area around it because it affects the below people and the people above it. So what I'm saying at this point is, when you're doing the development, and you're affecting other people's land beside yourself, or affecting other people's road beside yourself, um, it does make a difference.
I'm just wondering about the, the parking and the traffic increase, I, I guess I, I'm not seeing if we have no events and all of our kids are literally living there. And that, this is already passed, so I'm just a little confused as to what we're, and we're working with the county to make sure that everything is stabilized and everything.
So what I would say is, I'd say the neighbor above you needs to open what you guys are doing, and maybe they do, I don't know, something. And they start parking, and they start having more traffic, because if you do it, they should be able to do it, right?
Absolutely.
Do the whole thing, and so they have to improve just their road. So we don't have to improve the eighteen foot road or the twelve foot road beforehand, right, guys?
We already do.
They only have to do their road right here, the eighteen foot, just.
We did from the bridge.
They can't do the Forest Service one, because the Forest Service one is the one who controls that, so they don't, they don't have an option in that, the Forest Service, that's what this Forest Service is doing.
So now, the other people want to do this, so we can't have them do that because we only have a twelve foot road. So Katie and those guys can do it because it's their land, but the people above it cannot, because this road only has twelve foot road. So now, we cannot, so the people above you that might have forty or sixty or eighty acres, they can't do this. But they have enough room for the parking, they want to do a V H R, they want to do twenty people, they want to do everything you do and do the parking, and they aren't gonna make any noise, and they're gonna be really nice, and they're gonna help the people above them.
Why can't they do it?
Twelve foot road into their road, but you guys improved your road, they're gonna improve their road, and we have to be fair to everybody in that area.
Well, we, we've improved all the road entirely to our property. No, 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 no.
Forest Service.
For, for all the neighbors that goes from the, from the creek.
From the, from the creek, which ends the Forest Service road.
Right.
All the way up to their property, which encompasses, I believe, three or four accesses?
Yes, but from the, from the highway to the creek is twelve feet.
Uh, we, we can't control that, we're not allowed to control that.
That's what I'm saying, that's the difference between a commercial highway service property coming into a, and residential. When we have highway service or commercial coming off a property, property, and it is served as that, it, it is comprehensive planned that way, that's why, because it didn't have a twelve foot road coming off. These, these neighbors are telling you, they have a twelve foot road coming into a P U D, P U D on an eighteen foot road. So now Cody, if he, he has three, you, three people now that want to do major plan unit, unit developments on this property right next to you, then we could go ahead and do it, right? Because they have a twelve foot road, and they are legally bound to be able to do that, right?
Uh, Coach Zach, I'm a middle painter, so the, the twelve foot line that you're talking about from Highway sixteen to the bridge is what you're referencing right now. So the reason, one reason why that wasn't improved is because, so the emergency services was the main, uh, commenter on, on the road with, and they had major concerns with it. Uh, the forest service portion, they didn't have as much concern with because it was actually wider than most of the road that was farther down. So they improved from, it's approximately like right in here.
My point, Cody, is, we put, we put highway service and commercial on properties closest to the highway for a reason. Major unit, major plan unit developments and plant, uh, P U Ds for me have always been a problematic thing for the county, because we've done this in areas of residential to make it fit for people that already have this type, type of things. And now we've done it again, and we put it in a residential area that has the same consequences to the neighbors as commercial. That's what I'm saying, and we were, I thought at one time we were gonna get rid of P U Ds.
Um.
I haven't liked them from the beginning.
Yeah, so this, this is a P U D overlay, and, and I think there's some confusion when it comes to a P U D overlay. So if you're a specialty resort or a rec resort, uh, you are automatically a P U D overlay. This isn't a specialty, they're not requesting to be a specialty resort or a rec resort. Uh, there's also a caveat in there that if you have two or more conditional use permits, that you can be a P U D overlay, and that's what they're requesting, these are two, um, basically would be two separate conditional use permit requests, but they're combining it into one P U D overlay.
Which is not your fault, Cody, but it's been problematic since I've been here to do this, and something needs to be a little bit, I don't know if we can change it, but it has been problematic since we started, because it starts looking more commercial than it does in neighborhoods instead of having highway service or commercial where it should be.
So.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Travis.
Just clarification since Cody's up there, and, and maybe, I hope I asked the question correctly. So I understand why we use P U D overlay, because we're having multiple C U Ps that are on the, on the, on the piece of property. Those C U Ps are, are, each one of those C U Ps in, in and of itself would be an authorized use, as, assuming we approved it, based on what the usage is and based on the current zoning. But we put it in a P U D, so it covers them all, correct?
Correct, so like, for example, the item previous for the one on Deerfield, that would have required three or four separate conditional use permits, and it was.
On track.
That they met the requirement for, uh, I think it was a rec resort or a specialty resort, so that's what it was ran under.
And what it is doing is it's really kind of lumping two processes into one, so they can do, essentially, and I'm just, I hope I'm saying it right, they're doing two C U P processes through one process. We could technically make them do two C U P processes, which would be fine, but it would be, it might be easier for them to get what they want, because it follows a little bit different pathway, doesn't it?
Correct, both would just go to planning commission, and the board would not see, the, the board doesn't see, uh.
But you also might see where there's a pattern of where it's turning into commercial with not lumping C U Ps into one, you might be able to not have so much commercial or C U Ps right next to each other, and not have it so problematic, instead of lumping it into a P U D.
So I'm not saying it's commercial, but I'm gonna say it certainly has that overtone of commercial. And so we've made the decision to continue this until the eighteenth, and that's what we're gonna do today. And, uh, you know, I don't know if it's possible at this stage of the game, but it would really be nice if you could find a mediator between you and the homeowners there, because I think this is where a lot of the problem is, there just hasn't been any communication. And, uh, I think that would go a long ways, if that's even possible, I don't know that it is, but.
Well, I, I don't know if you remember our conversation last spring, but we asked you if you need someone, and if you'd be willing to be a part of that. Um, I know we met individually with everyone in this.
I will.
Okay, that would be wonderful, thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
Okay, well, we're gonna move on to, uh, our next item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you vote to continue?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I guess I didn't get it, okay.
I believe it was unanimous, too. Didn't we, right?
Yeah.
I thought.
Yeah, I was pretty sure we did.
We did.
And then he gave her, her, her three minutes that was longer.
Yeah, that's probably right.
So Holly, we're on item twenty-six.
Correct, yeah.
So item twenty-six is the legislative session, and, um, I'm gonna ask Gary Drews to, uh, update us on what's going on in Pier.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first of all, we just got this message in this morning. Uh, House Bill, uh, ten sixty-four, uh, requires the united, unified judicial system to assemble.
We can hold off.
Maybe I'll wait, don't. Okay, House Bill ten sixty-four requires the unified judicial system to assemble a task force to address the provision of legal services to indig- indigent parties within the South Dakota court system and to declare it an emergency. And it's passed, both the House and the Senate anticipate that the governor will sign this. Uh, it establishes a task force to study legal costs to indigent parties within South Dakota. This has an emergency clause and will become effective once the governor signs. Counties will have three seats at the table on this. Uh, that doesn't mean it has to be county commissioners at the table, can be county commissioners, it could probably be somebody from the, that we would choose out of the state's attorney's office or anybody else that has an interest relative to this. So this is something we need to be thinking about, because of the emergency clause, as soon as the governor signs it, it goes into effect. Uh, and so they will be trying to establish this task force almost immediately at that point in time. So, relative to, uh, bills that are going before the legislature and talking, I spent a couple of days again in Pier last week, uh, and talking to legislators, it sounds like of all the, the tax proposals, the elimination of sales tax on food, or cutting back the amount on food, uh, or property tax relief, that probably the most likely one to, at this point, uh, to emerge from that is the three hundred dollar property tax, uh, exemption. And so, um, I've talked to, uh, our auditor and to I T in regard to this. Yeah, there's some work on, on their part in order to get this set, but this is probably, uh, one of the easiest ones as far as anything being done with property tax, instead of being a percentage, just a flat amount, so forth. Uh, probably one of the easier ones, not to mean that it isn't gonna take some time to do the programming and so forth. But probably the, uh, the easiest one for us to, to deal with of, of those that are being discussed at this.
So that one's about seventy-four million, or something like that?
Right, yes, that's what they, that's what, that's what they're saying, be about seventy-four million. Senate Bill twenty-one, which is the one that, uh, Commissioner Ross Connect and, uh, our Natural Resources, Scott Guffey, have been working on primarily, uh, that has a scheduled hearing for the twenty-third, what's, is this a?
Uh, today is the twenty-third.
This is twenty.
Yeah, Thursday.
So Thursday.
Thursday, so on Thursday is the, uh, hearing on that, scheduled hearing on that before, uh, uh, the joint appropriations. The, uh, Senate Bill thirty-one, the one to create the off-road vehicle decal, uh, for the state, uh, that's, at, on the governor's desk at this point in time, it's been, uh, passed by both the House and the Senate. Uh, there's nothing in that for counties, unfortunately. Uh, Senate Bill seventy-four, which is, uh, Senator Dewhamels' bill, would, would create the establishment of regional, regional jail authorities. Um, it's, it's not the answer overall for us or probably anybody else that's looking at building jails. Um, but as it's been described, it's another tool in the toolbox that may be utilized. Did pass the, uh, Senate, uh, twenty-seven to eight, and, uh, it's in the House State Affairs Committee, hasn't had a hearing at this point in time. That'll be probably coming up either later this week or next week. Senate Bill one fifty, uh, which is the one for the livestock pipelines and highways, this is the one that Justin Urie came, uh, to, uh, us requesting permission to do that, and we discovered through our state's attorney's office that we maybe didn't have the legal authority to actually grant that. Uh, that has passed the Senate, uh, on thirty-four to nothing. Uh, we appeared, uh, before the House Ag and Natural Resources last week, uh, passed over their twelve to zero, and is on, placed on the consent calendar and will be acted upon more than likely this week in the House. Justin Urie came to Pier for that, uh, last Thursday, he did a great job in explaining his situation of the deep well now in excess of three thousand feet on his land. And, uh, you know, for some of those, uh, especially East River, uh, when you talk about deep wells over there, you're not talking three thousand feet, so this was a little bit of an eye opener for a few of those, uh, individuals. So, uh, I, I don't anticipate that we'll have any kind of problem with that. Uh, Joe Miller also testified on that bill, appreciated that. Couple of water bills of Senator Dewhamels, uh, Senate Bill one fifty-two and one fifty-six, uh, that were up before the Senate Ag Committee last week, had you had the opportunity to be there and testify. And, uh, even though we lost the administration's support on these bills, the one bill, one fifty-sixth, uh, contains about a hundred million dollars in it, uh, ARPA funds, that would go towards water projects, uh, throughout the state. Not, it's not defined to any particular, uh, projects, uh, but everybody that's working on water projects will have an opportunity to make application for that. And, uh, she received a, um, I think it was unanimous approval out of the, uh, Senate Ag Committee, uh, for both of those bills. Then, on, uh, House Bill ten forty-two, Holly Hannies and Annette did a wonderful job on this. Uh, they went down and testified again last week, because it's now over on the House side, or on the Senate side. It did pass the House after their testimony in committee, sixty-eight to two. Uh, Senate Transportation Committee did a due pass, uh, recommend, recommendation on a seven to zero. And this does contain an emergency clause, so I can't go on the consent calendar, but did you find out, Holly, is that up today, or?
It is today.
It's on the, on today's calendar, so, uh, hopefully that'll be good news. Carrying the emergency clause again, that would go into effect for, uh, the advantage of our treasures throughout the state.
Gary, can you just give a overview on that, with that, it's seven fifty now, the, the, on that, the, on the one with the decals?
No, this is, yeah, no.
Oh, this is a different one.
Oh, what, no, no, you're, you're talking the right one, let me, let me turn that over to Holly. Holly, the agreement that you struck with the state on that was providing the bill now?
Currently, the law allows for the departments to collect five dollars for a set of license plates and a dollar for a set of decals. Um, the agreement and the bill has been amended so that it will be a dollar fifty for a set of decals and seven dollars and fifty cents per set of plates.
Can we go back next year and, and try to get that to where it originally was?
There was a provision added into the bill that the legislature will be required to look at it every four years. However, counties will be watching it every year and have the ability to bring it back if necessary.
Excuse me, Gary.
No, no, that's fine, I, in fact, I think even on the, on the Senate side, did you not get some encouragement that, uh, even to amend it higher, back to maybe what it, the original form, or?
Yeah, I, I was quite surprised at the Senate committee level that they seemed supportive of the original request that we put in, which would have been one dollar to two. which would have been one dollar to two dollars and five to ten. So we we were encouraged to watch it very closely and to bring it back when needed.
Thanks, Holly. House Bill ten ninety-nine, I'm sorry, ten ninety-eight is the one that would revise provisions related to juror compensation. What it would do is take it from currently jurors and the serving on the first five days of a trial, get fifty dollars per day. After five days, it goes to a hundred and twenty dollars. And Holly, I'm missing what that amount is that he's proposing. Do you remember? I don't have it here on my notes. We do know that.
She'll receive, right now it's ten, moving up to fifty. And then if they go, if the trial goes more than so many days, they get a hundred and twenty dollars per day for each day of service thereafter.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, fifty to eighty.
Fifty to eighty. That's what it is?
Yes.
Okay. So it'd go from fifty to eighty currently and then to a hundred and twenty or is it a hundred and twenty adjusted?
A hundred and twenty per day for each day of service thereafter. But then the other provision, if they're called but not impaneled, it goes from ten to fifty.
Okay, okay. So it would, we know that in just doing the the quick figuring that it would cost Pennington County for just those first five days, not considering trials that go beyond that, about a quarter million dollars. And so it's a big number. And it's it's relative, that number is relative to all the counties throughout the state. And so what I'm pushing for on the Senate side is for the state to pick up that tab. It's up before Senate Judiciary. We have a couple of our locals. Senator Dewhamels, the chair of that, Senator Dietrich is also on that committee. And so hopefully, hoping that we can have some impact on that bill before it's acted upon in the Senate and hopefully carries some sort of amendment that would at least have to go back to the House then. Okay, I think I've got maybe one more. I don't. That's all I have to report on.
So the one on the Helane's bill relative to the regionalization of jails, how many counties would that actually help? Would it just be the larger counties? And is there a limit on how, is it two or three that?
Yeah, you you could you could join with other counties on it. So it probably could impact every county. Obviously, not every county is interested in building a jail. There's a number of them that would wanna wanna share a jail with somebody else. And for example, like Brown County, they're working on theirs right now. I think they've got five or six counties involved in that effort to try to do that. But every county could cash in on that. It would require a vote of the people in order to do it. And it's it's one of those things where I don't think it's just on its own merit, is probably real popular at this point in time. It has to be combined with some other things. There's another bill that's attempting to get through, offered by Senator Breiling, I think on a hearing, that is is trying to move another one through that has actually some dollars tied to it, looking at fifty million dollars. But that's kind of a revolving loan fund at the same time in there, so money would be coming back. So there there isn't any clear bills on jail expansion or jail building that would really be a fix-it-all type thing, especially for us.
We already do compacts with other counties for juvenile. Did you know that?
Right.
For the surrounding areas. So if they could do something like that for including in Pennington, that would in the surrounding areas of the smaller counties for us, that would be nice.
Our needs assessment, though, is telling us that in fifteen to twenty years, we're gonna need another six hundred beds. And I think it's gonna be a lot for a county to say, we'll put the jail here because that's gonna be a very costly endeavor, not only once the jail's built, but then you gotta maintain it and run it. And if Mead County says, you know, we wanna build a jail, I I think that'd be a pretty good program, but I don't see that happening. So we'll move on to the next item, and that's items from the mission members. Do we wanna combine that with the building committees or do you want to do them separately? I'm open. And we can start with Travis.
Let's just combine them.
Okay. Yep. I'll run through mine. So we had a meeting out in New Underwood for the snow event. Gary was there, myself, and so was Lloyd. We were out there for the presentation of, I wanna say commendations, but basically for the snow event and all the work that Joe Miller, he he received an award out there. Some of the locals received award for setting up the snow shelters and things of that nature, for everything that went on. I've met with Jerome about New Underwood Fire Department. We're working through some stuff through there. I spent a lot of time out in Pier the last couple of weeks, and I expect I'll be leaving. If not tomorrow, I'm waiting to see what the calendar will look like, but I may end up going again either by the end of this week or next week for most likely. And then outside of that, my committee reports, I didn't go to the one. Floyd was supposed to go for me, and he's not here because I had a different meeting. So I'm good.
Fair.
Oh, fair board last night. Yes, you're right. We did have the fair board meeting. I have my notes sitting right here, but I didn't tell them. Mr. Hancock and I were at the fair board meeting last night. It was a great fair. In fact, that was one of the first things they said. It was a really, really, really good fair.
Stock show.
Stock show. See, you said fair and you got me going. Interesting, fair board, yeah, I know, but the stock show was really good. A record two point six million dollar total in horse sale revenue. So that was that was a good number. I think the previous year was two point three. Do you remember what he said?
Biggest ever.
Huh?
It was the biggest horse show sale ever.
Biggest horse show sale ever. So that was amazing. Outside of that, they, oh, most of their, most of their events all increased in revenues where their their Boots and Beer doubled in revenue, their Wild Ride almost tripled, and their horse show, livestock show sales were up as well. So, I mean, it was pretty, pretty good numbers for what they've they've done. They've kind of restructured the way they're giving their financial report, which is kind of good. It's putting all the revenue and losses together for that rather than breaking some of it out into having just one one chunk report for like advertising and things of that nature. But we'll see how that works and see how it compares for future. Do you have anything you wanna add to that one?
I think.
Okay. Garrett, you wanna?
Okay.
Thank you, Travis.
I attended my first meeting of the library board, which was interesting. Twenty twenty-two as compared to twenty twenty-one. Library experience increases in new and total borrowers, computer use and patron contacts, pop-up library use, entry, checkouts, data use, and social networking engagement. The only decreases they had was was in the drive-through and library events. They just cut back a number of library events. But the new borrowers increased by twenty-one percent and total borrowers increased six percent. I'm wanting to go over thirty-five hundred new people using the library. So a total of thirty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty-two actually borrowed items from the library. Community members and visitors spent over two hundred and eighty-two thousand hours using library computers and Wi-Fi, a nineteen percent increase. And the library staff engaged with over fifty-seven thousand individuals, which is a twenty-two percent increase. So they had a, they had a good year. The growth since COVID has been pretty substantial each year for it. They are getting a new bookmobile that chassis was just completed by Floyd's Truck Center here. And now it goes to for the Wisconsin for hybrid drive installation. And then after that, it goes to Maryland for construction of the box that goes on it. So probably be fall before that actually gets back here. And then on the building committee, I'm gonna let Ron cover that. And MPO Executive Policy Committee, I was in Pier, so I know Lloyd was at at that one. Unfortunately, I don't have any of the information in regard to that at this point in time. And then the only other thing that I really participated in is Sunday night. I went to Wasta for their volunteer fire department fundraiser. Had a super turnout for it. I don't know how many they actually had, but they certainly filled the building probably two or three times.
In Wasta.
In Wasta, yeah.
So the night before, I drove to Rochford and I attended the their fire department, kind of a belated Christmas party. But Jerome was there and they had a pretty good turnout. They actually prepared a meal at the Moonshine Goat Salon. It was prime rib. It was a really good meal and a good turnout. And before I left, I just wanted to thank every one of those volunteer firefighters for their service. A couple of months ago, they had a really nasty house fire just west of Rochford in the Mill Church Ranch subdivision. And place was a total loss. But anyhow, they just, you don't realize how much you need a volunteer fire department until you really need a volunteer fire department. Planning Commission, the two, the two items that we really struggled with was one that we did the day, the music venue, and then the other one is Larry Tuber has a residence that he sold to Tina Roberts out there in Clarkson. And I think there were just so many things that weren't done properly as far as getting permits and whatnot. And then after Tina bought the property, it's now it's being brought to the attention of our planning zoning department, and they're trying to find a compromise so she doesn't have to start taking her place apart to meet the conditional use permit, which hinges around a multifamily. So that one there is, it's just been continued, so it's it's still out there and it's gonna come in front of us again. And then I did the special two-hour meeting of vacation home rentals. And I asked, we had a full crowd, and I asked the crowd, you know, raise your hand if you're, you know, if you're kind of, I said, I'm not, you know, not really opposed to, but if you're concerned. And so I'd say at least ninety-five percent of the people there were in the business of vacation home rentals. And they emphasize the economy and and whatnot. But there again, you know, the other side of that, it's not always the economy. It's you still gotta appreciate, you know, property rights of the people that could be affected. And I keep thinking that if you drill a well and they say, okay, I just want you to know your neighbor drilled a well three years ago. And if we got water problems here, the dominant well is gonna have the water rights and you're gonna have to cease because you because you're not the first, you're the second. And I kind of see the same thing when they do the vacation home rentals. The folks that have lived there first should have, not that they do, but they should have some say in the matter, say, I was here first. You know, and how do they, how do they get involved and is there a voice really heard? And to me, there's somehow or another, that's gotta be part of the component when we allow these. I know that, I know they've done some extensive work at committee. And I, you know, and I appreciate that there's two sides to that. But somehow I just don't think the landowners where some of these take place that that's the part that I'm still struggling with. But I'm glad I'm not part of it. I was just there. We didn't really have to talk. We just listened. But it was, we we filled the two hours and then we're gonna have another follow-up meeting. I think that's on the seventh. I'm going to the next one on the ninth, so darn it. Anyhow, that's all I got. Deb?
Building Committee.
Oh, the building committee. I asked Janet to be there with the treasurer's office and IT so that we could, when we move to the new facility out there at nine hundred concourse, that we can do something different with the telephone system because so many of my phone calls, and I think Travis can testify when you talked to Jan yesterday, that there there is some improvement in the phone system. And it's, I think there's twenty, forty-eight lines that come in. And so the question was, when we move out there, can we do something different or fix the one we got so we don't have that problem? Because I think there is a problem. And the the system that we have now, it's getting some age on it physically. And so at least we got the dialogue started because I'd like to get it worked out before we actually move. So we got a game plan in place. So that, you know, we're working on the telephone system, not the one we have. Even the one we have now, I guess IT says, you know, we can, there is things that we can do to make it better. So we've, we brought that connection together with the IT and the treasurer's office. And then the, another thing I wanted to talk about was the, when we do the South Rochford Road, Joe's gonna have to get another piece of equipment to maintain that. And the yard that we have in Hill City's got a very aging fuel system that could, if we have to fix that or replace it, that's about six hundred thousand dollars. And so he wanted to start the dialogue with the Nyman's that had the sawmill outside of Hill City to see if there's a twenty-six acre parcel that he likes and it's got a, it's got an existing building. And I told him, I tried to reach out to Jim to see if they'd even consider a purchase or a trade with our property in Hill City because the yard we have in Hill City is just too small. And it's gonna be, and and then if we get another piece of equipment, it will really be too small. And so, so it's like the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department. They went out and they tried to find a piece of land for a volunteer fire department. When all efforts failed, then they could go to the Forest Service and say, we've tried everything and that you're our last resort. And the Forest Service agreed to do a thirty-year special use permit. And I'm, I'm thinking that if we can't find a piece of land privately, and you gotta realize that there's, there might be a five acre piece of land, but we, there again, you're getting in the property rights. I don't think a residential sector wants to see a yard for a, but adjacent to the sawmill is ninety-four acres of Forest Service. And it fronts, so I chiseled down about seven acres on Rapid Map. And Friday, I'm gonna meet with Jim Goobles, who is the district ranger here for Mystic, and Joe's gonna attend that meeting. We're gonna talk about some stuff that the Forest Service wants to talk about, about approaches and whatnot off of Forest Service roads. But then I also wanna talk to Jim and say, Jim, if we cannot find a piece of land for our yard, you know, can we possibly enter into thirty-year special use permit? And that seven acres would be right across from Prairie Berry. And it's, it's, at one time, that was gonna be the state yard. So it's been on the table. But if we got that, then I, we just have a nice clean piece of land, seven acres. We'd have to excavate it and do the infrastructure, but we wouldn't have the, if we get the stuff, the sawmill, it's been sawmill for seventy-five years roughly. So you know that that yard's gotta be somewhat contaminated with antifreeze and oil and hydraulic fluid. And I think we'd just inherit a mess with that. I think if we work something out with the Forest Service and just get a nice clean seven acre piece, if they do anything like they do with Silver City, there's, there's no, it's a government entity and you don't, there's no cost to it. It's just you got the cost of the special use permit, which could be less than a thousand dollars. So I'm, I'm gonna start that dialogue with the Forest Service relative to the the needs of a bigger yard for the Hill City Highway Department. And then we kind of did an update. There's gonna be, some of us, we're gonna be on a committee that we review the two proposals put forth for the two companies that wanna go in there and do the engineering for the repurposing of nine hundred concourse. And we have two proposals, one from ARC and one from TSP, I think. They're just down the street. And so Kevin sent those out to the ones that wanna be on the review committee and. And we were asked to, the perfect score would be a hundred points. And there's different criteria. I read both proposals, front to back. And then I scored them, and that's what the other members of the review committee were asked to do. And then on March the third, we'll actually sit down and do in-person reviews. And then we'll select the engineering company that is going to go ahead and start putting together our property out there at nine-hundred Concourse. So that's kind of the meat and bones of the Building Committee. Did I miss anything, Gary?
Yep, that's it.
Good, good. Deb?
Thanks. First, Travis talked about the stock show. We are going to have the annual meeting the end of April. For the stock show, they're going to have three new people coming on. They should be able to pick that by March twenty-seventh. They're going to do some interviews for that. They have some good people on there now. For the Penny County Housing, we're starting our repositioning with Dominion. The Dominion staff are coming in. We're transitioning to RAD, so from public housing to RAD. So that's going on in Penny County Housing, so that's good. Compensation, of course, we're doing wage study. We're trying to figure out how that's going to play out and how probably the Sheriff's Office is going to play a little bit different than that because he's not going to be able to wait till twenty-twenty-five. So we'll be working with him, and he'll be working with our team to figure out how that's going to play. Let's see. I did attend the, after Penny County Housing came to the VHR meeting. And what I'm finding is we're starting to overregulate, I think, a little bit in government, businesses and properties to the point, like I said, on CUPs or PUDs or different stuff. Our planning department is amazing. I'm not going to say that. I'm just saying some of that. It's hard to distinguish sometimes between a commercial business and a major planned unit development or PUD. And then we get to distinguish saying, no, that's a major planned unit development when you already see it's commercial. And we can't call it commercial because it's not commercial. It's a major planned unit development. So we don't do three or four PUD or conditional use permits on it. Eleven-six-nineteen became a problem, and they were calling their conditional use permits, eleven-six-nineteens went away, I'm correct, in the city for that reason. It just became problematic. I don't know what we would do different. Maybe we have to look at that solution. Maybe they already have. Our planning department, like I said, has been amazing at trying to change things with Megan to figure these things out. Like I said, it's hard to say no to these people in one sense, and it's hard to say yes when the road doesn't meet it, going into it doesn't meet it. It's not like that we don't want change, and I wasn't trying to be mean to Darla, but we're not trying to shut everything down. We're trying to distinguish something that would work with both sides to make it so that kind of business would work with the neighbors and still be, because the people are trying to do music in an area that they want to turn to me. I believe those cabins later on are going to be something different than they are. And the festival's going to be a lot different, and it's going to be more of a bigger event. It's going to keep growing. That's a positive thing and one thing, because we want people's businesses to grow. We're very happy for that, but I don't know. I don't live out there, so I can't tell the whole effects of that business because that might be different business that's next to me. I don't know how we find that solution, but when it comes to the VHRs, they have health code through the state. We don't have that when we have, when you rent your house next door, do you regulate how many years in your neighborhood for rentals? Do we?
No.
On our streets?
Not to my knowledge.
Do we say you have to have a homeowners association in your neighborhood?
Nope.
Do we say that, that you have to have that just because we don't want all the rentals in our neighborhood? Are we getting a little bit crazy on our regulation on people trying to make a business and trying to do something in their neighborhood that is used less than a rental unit, a home rental unit does? Guys, we're getting, that's a little bit crazy. And do we care if it's a quarter or a half acre except that we want to make sure septic and water is safe? I was watching that going, we are getting crazy because people don't want them next to them. Don't want what? If they're following the rules and regs, the only one I shut down was the last one. And these are people that did it for a business that didn't follow any of it and didn't even transfer it. That's the only reason why I shut that one down for me. But where does government start regulating how many people? Okay, I don't know that, how many people are in that bedroom? And holy cow, I was just listening to people going, I don't think so.
That was one of the things that was, you know, definitely hit on it, that two-hour meeting was, why do we even need an ordinance, you know, like why can't we? The state tells us what we can do, and so what do we need the ordinance for? And, you know, part of that I totally agree with, but then I think they're saying, why do we even need zoning? Well, you need zoning because if you have a two-million-dollar vacation home rental, you don't want somebody to come in there and put a junkyard, so there's got to be. But I think, yeah, I don't think.
Regulated, but don't, we're starting to overregulate. We're starting to pick apart things that the neighbors don't like when we understand the property rights. But we also have to say, if this was our business or we were doing this, are you picking people apart to the point where you just sit there and go, okay, this is, would you want this in your business? Of course they wouldn't. And if you did that in your business, would it be different? They wouldn't. So I did listen to it for an hour, and I thought there was good discussion in one sense and other people trying to regulate and being able to regulate someone's business that they shouldn't be able to do those kind of things and regulate it that way. And I don't think government should be playing that role. So, yep. So hopefully, we can do something good for VHRs so people can run a business and still move forward on it.
So you did get to watch part of it?
I watched an hour of it because I had.
Thank you.
Anyway, are we done with our meeting?
Okay, well, let's see. I'm going to go to item twenty-nine. This is going to be my favorite part of being the Chair. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion carried. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Adjourned.